I'd like, if you could all please rise, I'd like to have Pastor Russ Nguyen with Springs Church lead us in prayer. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Let's bow our heads for prayer, please. Father, we come to you and we ask your blessings to rest upon this city council. And Lord, we just thank you, Lord, for the men and women who give of their time, their energy, their talents to serve this community. We pray, God, your wisdom, you see the agenda that's before them tonight, give them the insight needed to address the issues. Protect our law enforcement, our first responders, as protect them as they protect us. In your name we ask, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Councilman Schlaackta, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
With the honor, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Here.
Councilman Dewitt?
Here.
Councilman Schlaackta?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Great. Well, good evening, everybody, and some of you, welcome back. We had a workshop with quite a great discussion, so we'd like to open this up this evening with public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak? Councilwoman, how are you?
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon. It's got a dash in now, gotta go make mom's dinner. I want to, first of all, I want to congratulate you, Mayor, for the water conservation pledge, and I hope you bring it up during your council member item, or mayor and council member items. I'm sending it out to everybody I know. I hope everybody sends it out. But Benita Springs and our comprehensive plan says we are a green city, so I thank you for following the comp plan and encouraging people to conserve water. It's expensive, even though we had a lot of it this summer. You know, it's not the kind of water you can drink. So, secondly, I'm here because under the consent agenda, we have the project agreement for the Benita Springs Community Lions Club at Benita Nature Place. We'd hoped to do more this year, but there was a thing called Irma, put a little crimp in all of our styles. And what we'd look forward to is talking to the city, is talking to you guys and the city management about hopefully bringing some of our Benita Springs middle school, maybe elementary school kids over there for field trips. They aren't really aware, a lot of people aren't aware of Benita Nature Place, and it's a wonderful asset the city has invested in, and we can teach about water conservation and biology, and, you know, kids are kind of in nature deficit, in a nature deficit. This way, they can come to appreciate it at a young age and be the conservationist that you are, Mayor Simmons, and the rest of you, council. I thank you, and have a great evening. I'm gonna dash.
Wonderful. Thank you, Martha.
Thanks for approving that, guys.
Okay. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward, okay? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to proclamations and presentations. If Nicole Perino would come forward, please.
Hello. How are you? After you. Thank you very much.
Wow, look at these great pictures, huh? Wow. Good evening, how are you?
Great.
Great. This is, on behalf of the City of Benita Springs, ten years of service presented to Nicole Perino, as of the seventh day of January 2018, in appreciation and recognition for ten years of public service to the City of Benita Springs. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons and City Manager Carl Schweng. Congratulations.
Yay! (applause) Thank you. I am very honored to have been working with the city for the last ten years. Can't believe it's been ten years. Seems like yesterday, but I have a great staff. The park staff are fantastic, so they really make me look good, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole, and congratulations. Thank you very much.
(applause)
Got it. Great, thank you. Thank you, Nicole. Dallas, would you like to come forward, please, and take over here? Nice to see you. How are you? Welcome.
My name is Dallas Revor. I am the chairman of the Historic Preservation Board. It's an advisory board for the City of Benita Springs. Back in 2016, in the fall, we had a photographer come forward and said that he would like to work on a project with us, which is taking photographs of historic Benita Springs. So, he came forward to, came to one of our meetings, and the board decided to go forward with this project. This person took over a thousand pictures of the springs, and then he brought fifty of them back to the board and said that he would like to have our viewpoint, and so the board picked out thirty photographs to take around to the city and do different things with them. So, I would like to introduce Brian Teetz. He is the photographer that did this. (applause)
I was quite comfortable, Dallas.
I know, sorry.
That's okay. Brian, how are you?
Great. Fantastic.
Nice to see you. So, this is, on behalf of, on behalf of the City of Benita Springs, certificate of appreciation presented to Brian Teetz. The City of Benita Springs honors photographer Brian Teetz for his generous donation of time and talent in capturing the beauty, history, and spirit of Benita Springs. Thank you. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons and Dallas Revor, Chairman, Benita Springs Historic Preservation Board. These are fabulous, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, sure. This was a project that I took on. I try and do a pro bono project every year and try and give back to my community, and, you know, I'm from Fort Myers, but I'm trying to cover all of southwest Florida and give back any way that I can, and I usually try to do that through my photography, and I was honored that Benita Springs took me up on my offer, and it was a pleasure to work with everybody. Thank you.
Well, these are fabulous, fabulous photographs, and if you can't quite pick up on it with the pictures, I know, council, you're a little handicapped here, but like, for example, if you look at these photos, the color in them, and then you look at, you know, the back, they are just, I don't know, they are just fabulous. They are absolutely wonderful. And I was just gonna say, Alex Grant, are you here?
Yeah.
Alex, you never looked so good in your entire life. You looked fabulous, Alex. That is wonderful, councilman, so, thank you. Anything else, Dallas, please?
Like Brian said, it was a fun project to work on. It was fun to go through them, and it was very difficult for us to pick out the ones that we liked, but I look forward to seeing these around the city. They will be on display in the Lyles Hotel for the art fair this weekend, so we have approximately thirty of them. We're gonna do fifteen for this art fair and fifteen for the art fair next month, so stop on by and make sure you come, come and see them, because they are really historical Benita Springs. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Can I get a photo?
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, Jane, Ron, are we, Ron, are we? Yeah, please.
How are you? Nice to see you. Good to see you again. How you doing?
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
(applause) Good work. Thanks, guys. I think I'm done.
Okay. Presentation of Storm Ready Certification to the City of Benita Springs and Benita Springs Fire Control District.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Simmons, council members. My name is Rodney Nguyen. I'm a meteorologist at the National Weather Service Office in Ruskin, and I'm here today to prevent the, or to present the Storm Ready Recognition plaque and congratulate the City of Benita Springs on completing this. Storm Ready was established in 1999. It's basically had a lot of people involved, including Fire Chief Daigle, Assistant Chief Dewitt, Training Coordinator Nicole Hornberger, and many other community leaders to accomplish this, this feat. So, some of the things that were required for this was a 24-hour warning point for hurricane warnings, severe weather, so we can get that out to the public. You had to have more than one way to receive severe warnings, including hurricane warnings, create a system that monitors local weather, promote public readiness through training, such as Storm Ready, weather spotter training, and those seminars that have been held throughout the year, and also create formal hazardous weather plans, weather spotters, and exercises to plan for events such as Hurricane Irma that we've seen last year. So, with that, we will present the Storm Ready plaque that can be proudly displayed here at the city hall or any other prominent place throughout the city.
Chief? Chief Daigle? Mayor, would you come? Sure. That looks, that looks pretty good, huh? You wanna start us off here, Greg?
No, it's, no, go ahead.
No? Okay. Well, Storm Ready, National Weather Service, we are storm ready, be prepared. Weather.gov/stormready, Benita Springs. I mean, this is beautiful. This is fabulous, so. Chief, how are you? Nice to see you. You wanna add a few words here?
Yes, I wanna say thank you to the city council and also the city manager, Carl Schweng, who was a big part of putting this together, and so thank you very much. Glad we could do our part.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do you wanna add anything?
Storm Ready doesn't mean storm proof, but it does mean you're better prepared when the hazardous weather does come across the area.
Right. Fabulous. This is great. Greg?
No, I just wanna thank everybody. It was a great partnership with us. We did this training out at the fire department, then we did take a trip up to Ruskin to see what the National Weather Service provided for us and what kind of work they do up there. And for what the staff they have, they do quite a lot, so.
Just gonna say, thank you very much. Everybody smile. Great. Thank you. (applause) I'm getting all kinds of artwork here. This looks great. I guess I'll just set this right here. Fabulous. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Council, what's your pleasure there?
Just pull H for a comment, that's all.
Pull H for a comment? Motion to approve the rest?
So, move?
Okay. There's been, yes, Amy?
I just wanna ask a question about A.
Sure. So, we'll pull A, okay? Absolutely. So, we're gonna pull A, we're gonna pull H?
Second.
Motion to approve the rest?
Okay, motion in a second, okay?
Further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Schlaackta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Okay, A, Amy.
Just my question, I just wondered what the backstory was here, you know, because I know that originally when we did this, we didn't wanna have people outside the, or for some reason, we excluded people that were outside the residential area, and now we're coming, asking them to come back. Is there a problem?
Well, no, there's not a problem.
Is there a problem getting people to?
No, there's not a problem getting people, there's, you just have some very active members that are from Astero, but I'm gonna let Laura comment further on that.
Hi. Laura Taylor, the Director of Communications. The committee is fully staffed at this point. We did have one member that was appointed that could not fulfill the term, and at that time, we had two ex officio members that were participating but not voting, and the committee did advertise the position, the vacancy. We did not get any applications during that time, and they wanted to reappoint or to appoint the ex officios to become full members and allow voting, but not excluding one of the members. So, since there were two ex officios, they voted to make the recommendation to include them both.
Okay, so they just increased the size?
Yes.
But there's no problem having it, even though no one responded when we had the opening?
No, there's no problem. What we would do is, if there is another vacancy, we treat it the same. We would readvertise it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, move.
Second. Okay, motion to approve in a second. Further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Schlaackta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Okay, A, Amy.
Just my question, I just wondered what the backstory was here, you know, because I know that originally when we did this, we didn't wanna have people outside the, or for some reason, we excluded people that were outside the residential area, and now we're coming, asking them to come back. Is there a problem?
Well, no, there's not a problem.
Is there a problem getting people to?
No, there's not a problem getting people, there's, you just have some very active members that are from Astero, but I'm gonna let Laura comment further on that.
Hi. Laura Taylor, the Director of Communications. The committee is fully staffed at this point. We did have one member that was appointed that could not fulfill the term, and at that time, we had two ex officio members that were participating but not voting, and the committee did advertise the position, the vacancy. We did not get any applications during that time, and they wanted to reappoint or to appoint the ex officios to become full members and allow voting, but not excluding one of the members. So, since there were two ex officios, they voted to make the recommendation to include them both.
Okay, so they just increased the size?
Yes.
But there's no problem having it, even though no one responded when we had the opening?
No, there's no problem. What we would do is, if there is another vacancy, we treat it the same. We would readvertise it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, move.
Second. Okay, motion to approve in a second. Further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Schlaackta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Okay, and item H?
Yeah, on H, I just, you know, when we have volunteers like Jim Worcester, who do a lot of hard work, I think it's important to recognize this. That's the reason I pulled it. Jim, as you know, and Roger Brunswick, Peter, we both know, and got together with various people and got that signal put in up at the North Gate, which met the warrants, and they've noticed that there's an opportunity to speed up the lefts going into Benita Bay, which will inevitably speed up the traffic flow on US 41 as a result. And Jim, with, you know, a career of fifty years in the business, put this work together. So, I just wanted to say thank you. We're gonna give it a shot. Carl's gonna send a letter or chat with FDOT about it, but hopefully this will help somewhat with respect to speeding more traffic on US 41.
Great. Yep.
I think it's a great idea, and I'd also like us to look into other traffic signals, see if it's possible that we could do it elsewhere in the city. I do a lot of driving, especially at night, and I know Naples, there's a lot of blinking yellow arrows, and then after, I think it's eleven or midnight, actually, a lot of the intersections just go blinking, so that there is no, you know, the side streets have to stop and then yield, but the, the main streets have the flashing yellow, so they have the right of way. It speeds a lot of things up. You never see anything backing up late.
Well, let's hope this first shot, and then we can piggyback on it.
Yeah.
So, that's all I wanted to say. I'm making a motion to approve.
Motion to approve in a second?
Second.
Further discussion, roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Schlaackta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Okay, great. Mayor and council member items, we have an errata sheet here to provide direction relative to the lease with Twisted Tangle Cafe, and I brought this forward. Just wanna rewind the clock a couple of months, and I forget exactly when I had been approached by a constituent to say, hey, would you go down to the Twisted Tangle Cafe and meet with, with the tenant there? There's some issues, and went down there and heard quite a few issues, and, you know, I guess what, what started off as a constituent service call ended up with, Mayor, please don't call anymore, that's, it's now in the hands of the attorneys, so. It's been an interesting situation down there, you know? You thought you're doing a constituent service, and you're told it's now in the hands of attorneys, so obviously, we got a little situation down there, and I'd like to kinda get an update, if we could, please.
Thank you. First of all, before we talk about going into the hands of the attorneys, I just want to point out that constituents still have access to public officials. So, while matters get into litigation, we get into fights, people still have a right to access you, subject to ex parte if it's a zoning issue. So, well, but the attorneys wanted to handle it, you know, discussion, to try to get some emotional out of there, and he wanted it, he, that's horrible, the council for Twisted Tangles did want it. I did, it does make it easier for us to talk, and we were gonna talk with the city manager, and in the interim, before we had that meeting scheduled, we were actually asked, can we terminate the agreement? So, you have before you an amendment to the lease agreement that would call for a termination. If you recall, the reason this item was brought forward is you wanted to review the lease between Benita Wonder Gardens and Twisted Tangle, to have it brought up for discussion at your next council meeting, so that was what was scheduled. I, you have pretty much all the attachments I have. This is the document that, that's in the errata, was sent back by their attorney with revisions to a proposal I did. Under this termination, the current occupant will leave the restaurant midnight of February 16, 2018, so I believe that would be pretty much February 17, and will cancel the lease effective on that date. They'll vacate and surrender possession to the property and allow us reentry. Each party to the agreement will have no liability. They'll surrender the residence in what we call broom clean condition, and that basically means they're not gonna go through, the building won't, won't be spotless, but it won't be in disrepair either. The rent for February 1, because this was being discussed beforehand, would be waived if council's willing to agree to that and not be due, but in lieu, they will have to continue paying the grease trap at least for February, after which the city will be responsible for the grease trap costs, which the city, if you recall, about a year ago, you did a resolution that if something happened to the tenant, we would be able to use the city's ANC credits through BSU to do the payment, and then the city would return the security deposit. And we did receive the money from Wonder Gardens in order to do so.
Okay. Carl, do you have anything to, 'cause I know you were.
No, I think, I think Audrey's done a good job of summing it up. I think that we would be, we'd recommend approval of the termination of the lease, and it would be my expectation, we would simply go out and try to find another tenant that was appropriate to that location and hopefully would be value added to the operation of the Wonder Gardens.
What would that process look like?
Well, we would, I mean, we'd simply advertise for a tenant. We'd go out on the street, see what kind of response we got. We obviously would have, because we're owners, we would have the ability to control who goes in and who doesn't go in. And again, I think the main criteria is somebody who is credible, obviously has good credit, will be able to make the, the rent payments, and also be, again, an, almost an ancillary use to what the Wonder Gardens is doing. And frankly, another restaurant in there would probably make a lot of sense, but we'll see what the market brings.
Okay. Audrey?
Yes, I just wanna point out that during this process, we would be required to adopt an ordinance, because the charter, section 27, requires that when you have a lease and the value of the lease is over 15,000 of city property, you are required to have a ordinance, and so we would do that. That's just a little housekeeping, and we'd put it out, I'm sure, to a request for proposals and, and market it appropriately. Correct?
Right. Okay. Counsel? Amy?
Would we have the ability to, we wouldn't have to have the same leases as they, as this current restaurant?
I did some research for, as the city manager, and provided him with a municipal lease for restaurants that had optional clauses that were much different than this, so he can peruse that.
There might be things that I think need to be adjusted when I looked at the lease.
We absolutely agree. We need a tighter lease next time around.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Craig?
No, I agree.
Steve? No? Pete? Mike?
Motion to approve the termination.
Okay. Second. Okay, there's been a motion in a second. Further discussion, Fred?
I just wanna make sure we're not doing anything about changing the prior obligation of Wonder Gardens Board that's in the operating agreement. That's not in this deal.
At this point, if you, we will need, before the proposal goes out, I would presume the form of the lease and the proposal would be seen by city council. The proposal, city council could pick the lessor, and whether you want a right of first refusal and any other terms in the lease as to the relationship with Wonder Gardens, we could talk, but I would definitely think if you did require some kind of catering clause like they had there, it'd be adjusted, and it'd be mutually agreed upon with.
Yeah, I was just more concerned, since this is going to court, that we don't do anything else that would do something that a judge should be handling, that's all.
It's not going to court.
Okay.
The, the terminations pretty much settles everything.
Oh. Okay.
I guess the only provisions I'd like to see is, are the ti, you know, appropriate time of being open that was compatible with the Wonder Gardens operation, and I have issues about right of first refusal, and I would rely on what's customary in the lease.
I think there would need to be performance standards. I heard counsel during your workshop today talk about microbreweries as well as restaurants, and, you know, council needs to figure out what they want, and I think that would be something you would want to have in, because you don't want to have an unhappy hospitality person.
No.
It just makes it horrible. So, those are things that the city manager can come back with a proposal, RFP, as well, you know, with good timelines, so that we can get something in, work with Wonder Gardens to make sure that, that's a cohesive relationship, and also make sure you're happy with the form of the lease. It will be negotiated, and we will do the ordinance, that's my part, do the ordinance afterwards. Thanks.
And the bottom line, the council will pick the tenant, right?
You certainly have the ability to do an RFP that requires that.
Okay. Okay.
You, you could either be the ones picking it, or staff could set up a selection committee, and then you would have the final say.
Okay.
What, what ability do we have to do that, to choose it? I mean, could we just, choose it just on the basis of preference, nothing more than that?
No, I think you would want to put criteria. You'd wanna make sure that they, you know, are established, they have the capability, capacity, that they agree to certain performance standards. You want to maybe have backup, so that if you're not able to negotiate successfully with the number one, you can go to the number two to see if that works. And then you probably want to have this, there is an exception in the sunshine law, public records, as long as we tape record and keep meticulous information, so anybody can check. When you're in the actual negotiations, and this might be one where city council's involved in the negotiations more fully, it has to be taped recorded, so once that's concluded, it's public record sunshine law, but you can keep that exempt during the course of with the number one, you can go to the number two to see if that works. And then you probably want to have this, there is an exception in the sunshine law, public records, as long as we tape record and keep meticulous information, so anybody can check. When you're in the actual negotiations, and this might be one where city council's involved in the negotiations more fully, it has to be taped recorded. So once that's concluded, it's public record sunshine law, but you can keep that exempt during the course of negotiations.
Counsel, anything else? Carl?
Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend that you let staff do the heavy lifting on this and come forward with a recommendation or ranking maybe of potential tenants, and then council can decide how you'd like to choose.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I think that sounds good.
Yep.
Okay, fantastic, okay. Further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCorumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakis?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Okay, we are going on to two proposed draft city manager evaluation forms with options for review by city council. Councilman Forbes, I believe this is you.
Right. The, you've got, you know, I sent you two different options for both city manager evaluation as well as the city attorney. The wording or the instructions are basically almost identical between city manager and city attorney, other than the name of the position. I think that, first of all, I, a lot of work still needs to be done, but I think, number one, either one of these eliminates the, one of the complaints before, which was, there's all these criteria, and, you know, they're, they're, they're all basically equally weighted. Here's what I, here's my recommendation, which we can deal with it as a one-on-one motion, so we can separate them. Number one, I am not in favor of having a numerical scoring. Because soon as you put numbers in, you are, by definition, giving equal weight to each one of those criteria. And there will be things on both positions that will be far more important to you than a whole bunch of other ones, no matter how we do this. A lot of it will be dependent on what happens during the evaluation period. But as soon as you've put numbers down, you're going to have that problem. The second thing I would highly recommend is that we use the descriptive adjectives instead of the numbers. We can refine those adjectives that I put in here. And you could, instead of fail or does not meet expectations, you could put unsatisfactory. You could put, there's three or four other words we can all, that's not a big, big issue. I would also say, I, even though it was my idea and I showed that in these forms, I don't think the idea of having optional criteria is a good idea. Because it means you're going to come up with a criteria you're going to evaluate somebody with after they've gone through the period. And I think if, I think if the criteria is done properly, most anything that would come up would be able to be covered. Now, your own individual concept about how important is that particular item versus the other, that's going to be individually handled, because we're not weighting each one of these criteria as, as equal. So, and I, the other thing that I do recommend is that we go with five levels of ratings as opposed to three. Most of the rating systems are based on five. And I think it's, the way I look at it, it's the difference between being able to give somebody either a C grade or an A with no opportunity to give them a B. And likewise, if the opportunity to give somebody either a C or an F with no opportunity to give them a D, although a D isn't a real great grade, it's a lot better than an F. So I think that's what the five, so that, I can make each one of those individually as a motion, or if you all, if nobody has a violent objection to any of those, we can make one. So what, what's your pleasure?
Council?
Mayor?
Yes, Amy?
I don't have a violent objection, but I just want to show you, this is the work that was done in July. We went through this already. And it, I took quite a bit of time going through all the different alternatives that were there and had suggested that we go down quite a different path than what was here. And so I have a little trouble being constrained to these choices. And, and for a variety of reasons. So I don't know how to go forward with this, you know, but I don't, I don't think that we, that it's helpful to, I think it's too complicated. And because certain, some council people just, when they do the evaluations, they just gave everybody fives or something like that. That is not helpful, I think, when you're really trying to help the person that you're evaluating to get better, and everybody could get better. So we have to, the purpose of doing an evaluation is to set up some criterion where we would hope that there would be improvements in some of the things. So, and we can go through this, but I want to have the flexibility, I violently objected to the methodology that was used last time, you know, the conventional one. And I don't think this is much different from it, really. It's just using different words. And just, just for an example, I checked around to some people who do consulting work, and they say, never do five. In fact, you should never even do an odd number, you should always do it, an even number. Because what happens is everybody just gives you average, and you don't get any meaningful feedback. So you have to decide what we're trying to do here. We're trying to get really meaningful feedback. And the, the, the city, the city examples that I thought was most useful was one that was project-based, or I think it was Sarasota, I can have it here, I can look it up, where they had, they get the goal, like we have goals, there were objectives that this council had devised for the city, and they would choose transportation. And they would have specific projects that facilitated that objective. And then the person in question would be rated on how they made progress in that, on that project, and therefore supporting the project, the objective of the council. It was very specific, it wasn't nebulous, you know, you really could, and I think that maybe some combination of these kind of specific, what I call business kind of guidelines, with something that's really tangible would be a lot more helpful, at least in my mind. And I, I really think that we should continue the work that was done in July by, well, me and I, and I saw, and I copied the ones that Deputy Mayor O'Flynn had done. And not, I don't think anybody else really participated at that time, from what I see. So I have a little problem going forward with this.
Okay. Let me say this. Option one, I believe on both of them, are basically what one of the two of you said they liked, the forms of Fort Myers. So that option one, those criteria, those section names, they came from Fort Myers.
No, I, in my comments, I referred to specific cities for different parts. I didn't say just follow the option of Fort Myers. Like, for example, on organizational ability, I might have preferred the wording in a certain one. So, but I think I said that my preference was to go to something that was more project-oriented and not in this.
But if we do, and I can't disagree with the projects, it would seem to me that each year, at the beginning of the year, we would identify projects, and that would be what, would be part of your evaluation. But there are going to be things that happen, like Hurricane Irma, and there were events that happened there that will, would be part of evaluations. But I, you know, I don't, I have no problem if we don't do this. We can go back and use the existing forms. We're, we're at a point where, basically, we're going to be needing to do some kind of a evaluation here in the next month or so. I did say that I thought that no matter what we did, that once we did it the first time, that we would need to go back and have a postmortem and change it and all that. And so that.
What about having Amy take a shot at it based on what she was talking about?
Well, yeah, but she's saying three ratings. Let's see what the majority of this council wants.
All right, well.
On that, at least.
Saying four ratings, I said.
She said four.
Four.
She said not.
I did some checking around at what is the most effective way of getting useful information. And they said, do not do odd number of ratings, because you're going to get everybody average, basically. You should have to do something where someone really has to think about it and make a decision.
And get off, get off dead center.
Get off the average.
One way or another. I see that, that's a valid point.
You know, but, you know, we don't have to, that's sort of a minor point. Definitely five is, forget that, in my opinion. I'd rather do three if you're going to do five, but, you know, we should try to do something. And I like the sort of the lyric, not numbers, but something like, you know, meets expectation, exceeds expectation, or doesn't meet, it's something along those lines. That I agree with you, rather than the numbers. And I definitely don't think we should be adding anything together. And, and the issue about weighting is very, very important, because not everybody weights the criterion in the same way. And that should be the, you know, the freedom that each of the individual councilmen should pursue. But in any case, whatever we do, we're all independent. We'll do the same thing we did last time. If we don't like the form, we'll just write it whatever way we want, and we'll do it. But I think it would be helpful if we start thinking in a more functional way, because that's really what the whole point of this, is our manager and is our attorney advancing the goals and objectives of the council? And, and what have they done to accomplish transportation and beach access, or I forgot what are, what are our other objectives, you know?
Affordable housing, whatever.
Transparency, communications. We have those objectives. Each one of them, we should be able to look at and say, we have advanced transparency, or communication. Like, one of the things that I was concerned about was the, the communication between the manager and the council people. I know that was, I don't think he'll mind that I said, I think we could do better there. So this next year, when I talk to him, I'll say, you know, I think you did do better, you know? So that is important. That's more important than all these numbers. Because we'll be more satisfied as we learn to deal with our managerial people, that's my opinion.
Fred, how would you like to proceed?
I'll be glad to, we, I know we have to notice it, but I'd be glad to meet with Fred, and we'll notice that we're going to do a working session if that, and I think that would be, we should really work together. I mean, that's the problem with this kind of thing, is when somebody has to work in isolation without, we can't talk to each other. But we did, you know, we all, you know, Peter did a lot of work, I already did a lot of work. And, and I'd like to incorporate some of the things, and if, but again, what I think may not be what everybody else thinks. So it's really a problem.
Yeah.
You know?
When, when does the evaluations technically do?
February, right?
Typically, February.
Well, given the timeframe, if we can't come up with some kind of a solid solution to this, why don't we just stick with the old one and then go, and then terminate that one after this year and move on with something else?
Which we might end up doing, but why don't we have, take a shot at it?
Sure.
Audrey, could we have Fred and Amy get together for a little workshop?
Consistent with the.
Peter, if you want, I mean.
Trade that we did, we have standing committees, and this could be a standing committee.
Greg, I mean, whoever wants to go to the workshop.
Well, I guess, I mean, the first thing, before we. Schedule a workshop or whatever, I think we get what we all think. I mean, compared to what Fred's options one and two, I went through city managers and highlighted them, and they're almost exactly the same as what we're doing now.
Right, right.
And, you know, so we're changing just to say it's Fred's idea or whatever, it doesn't matter. And that's what the point I'm getting at, is it's the same. You know, there's been a lot of discussion on, okay, we're going to use words or adjectives. Whether you call it above average or a one or a five, it's the same concept.
That's right.
So I, I mean, if you're hung up on giving him an above average, then fine, give him above average instead of a five, which is excellent. To me, that, that's semantics, it doesn't really matter. I guess I'm looking at this as a holistic, holistic concept, that if I have a problem with the city manager or the city attorney, I shouldn't have to wait a year to show him an evaluation that got all threes, or all ones, or all fives. We should do that on a daily basis. No employee should be blindsided at the eleventh hour on their evaluation of what they've been doing wrong. I know where I work at, if I'm having problems with my deputy chiefs, I go to them right away. And if I feel strong enough, I will do a performance evaluation on them right there. Say, hey, this is what the evaluation you get today. And I'm going to continue to do these on you every month, until you get better or you go somewhere else. That's the way we do it where I work at. And, you know, no matter what criteria, four, three, two, five, in the waiting process, it's all going to be the same. If I feel the city manager gives me the utmost attention, I'm going to give him all fives. If Councilman Slakis says, well, he never calls me, he never does this, he's going to give him a one, and that's the criteria he's going to go with. And that's the weighting he's going to go with it. So the weighting of it, that communications should be lower on the level than the priorities and goals, and using the goal set, side of it too, is like, kind of like Fred said, things change. And each goal, we may set out five goals for the city manager or city attorney to go with right now. We may stifle that by not either giving them the time, the weather may not work out because of Hurricane Irma, you know, let's use any one of the lawsuits we're in right now. David Theriot can't make it, they've got continuances. This happened, that happened. So how are we supposed to evaluate them on goals if it never comes to fruition? So I don't know if there is a perfect way out there. And that's what I'm saying, is to spend a lot of time and effort on this. There is going, no matter what criteria we come up with, Mike's going to do it different than the way the Peters do it, way that, different than I do it. And, you know, whether you call it a four, four, three, two, like at the fire department, we got satisfactory, needs improvement, unsatisfactory.
And, and the other thing adding on to what you're saying, Greg, is somebody who's been on council for a longer period of time has had more experience working with these individuals versus somebody who's only been on council a year or two.
Yeah.
It's going to be indifferent.
And I think also, in expectations. If I have a different expectation of the city manager or the city attorney, I should go with them. I, this is what I expect of you, city manager. I expect you to call me every day, or I say, you know what, I don't want your phone calls, just email me. And then let those expectations weigh on how you evaluate. But if either one of those two don't know what your expectations are or my expectations are, I don't think it's fair to evaluate them on it blindly. So, you know, I, I just look at it a little bit different as, as a manager of what I do. And I'm, I guess, trying to impart that wisdom here, whether you write a one paragraph letter saying, hey, you did a great job this year. I think you, give you all fives, or, hey, you need to improve on this, this, and this. But I think if there's any improvement or if there's any negativity, we should, as officials, go to that person when it happens. He shouldn't, nobody should be blindsided. Just like, I mean, the only time we're blindsided is on the election day. But we all get phone calls and emails every day, please do this, please do that. They let us know what they think. I think we should have that same courtesy with, with our staff. And I'm hoping that Audrey, who has staff, and Carl, who has staff, he does the same thing, that if he's having a problem, sorry to call you out, Nicole, or Laura, or whatever, if he's having problems with, with those two directors, he should be telling that right away. Not wait until the twelfth month.
Especially Laura.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Fred? Why don't we do this? We've agreed that we're not going to use numbers, and I don't, I have no problem leaving average off of the five scale. Why don't we get Audrey to post it and, and Amy and I and Peter will get together and see if we can improve upon what I got? I will say this, that Fort Myers is not the same as ours. I added some of ours back into it, but it's not identical on the criteria, so. But that's.
I'm being volunteered, I want to back out a little bit. I think it's fine if you and Amy did it. I gave my, I think part of what happened here is the hurricane. I'm sure that's part of what happened here.
Yes, right.
All right. So I gave my comments there. Actually, I found them the other day, we're in a green sheet from July. I actually marked the whole thing up, and none of them found their way in. I know I got to believe that's just because of the hurricane, it's just a lot of stuff.
Well, and the other thing, to be honest about it, I had everything on a flash drive, and when I was doing those newsletters.
Right.
I had it virtually done. I came down and I gave it to the lady that worked with, in Jane's office.
Right.
To load them. And all I know is that, when I got home and checked, I didn't have the flash drive.
I'm sure, so.
So I had to start from scratch.
So those are out there. I mean, I agree with, I mean, I think I hear Greg saying, look, guys, this is reality here. And we got, and I will say, I didn't think the current form was very good, but I had no problem giving Carl a review and writing, I played with it and. Right. Gave him, you know.
That's what I did.
Right, so, but having said that, if we have two people on council who are trying to make the form better, I don't see a problem with having them take a shot at, at bringing good ideas to us, Greg, that's.
No, I don't have a problem with it. I'm just looking at, like I said, I went through here, the current one.
Right.
And everything except for, I think, four items were in either option one or option two.
I hear Amy saying she has different ideas.
That's what, that's my point.
Yeah.
It's like, it's just like rehashing the same old thing.
Right. And I think the other thing I do want to reiterate, and we had this conversation last June or July, that this evaluation, these evaluations should be a tool. This should not be the be all, end all of what we decide to do with their contracts. These should not be tied to what we do with those, with those two employees in the future. It is a tool to.
Yeah, I see that as a guide for our employees about our expectations. We formalize the expectations that we give them, because I'm with you, you know, we, well, everybody exchanges emails and telephone calls and all this stuff. And, and if something, if they, if they do something good, I try to tell them, you've done a good job here. I make a point of doing that. And if there's something I don't like, I, you know, I'll tell them I don't like it. But it's, it's not as formal as looking at it in a holistic way. But I think that's what performance evaluations are for, is to work together so we all get the product we want and they grow. Everybody that works grows every single day, you know?
I don't disagree with that, but it's.
But it's also.
It's hard to juggle, in this, in this case, seven different, either wants, needs, or demands.
Well, it's the job.
Yeah, I know, it's the job, but I mean, that, that's the part of it, is that unless he knows how to juggle what Mike wants, what, you know, Fred wants, and what we all want.
If you have it functionally, we already defined, you know, defined our objectives. If you have it sort of geared in that way, then you have something that's concrete, it's not nebulous with what, you don't have to have the whole form that way. You have like a subset of this with just sort of broad categories that they can, you can make any kind of comment. But this evaluation is for us to understand each other, whether you're satisfied or you're not satisfied. I didn't get that feedback, because I was new on the council.
Greg, I'm sorry, but I mean, I would tell you, I've been around a lot of boards of directors and, of companies. And what she's talking about is typical.
No, I understand.
I mean, in other words, there are, there are basically goals, and that's part of it.
Oh, I understand that, and I, and I agree with the goals. I'm just looking at, like, let's use one of them, I'll just pull it out. Reporting to city council in a timely, clear, concise, and thorough, one through five. If you. No, I know, I'm just, I know you're not, but I'm just saying, expectations for all of us.
Yeah, yeah.
If I get it a day in advance, I am good with that. Now, if I get blindsided here, okay, I may be upset with it. Where the mayor may want it, I want it two weeks in advance. Where I'm talking about this whole rating, how we rate it and how it's weighted is the, is the part. You know, the goals, the goals and expectations are a little different. Did we meet the goal, was the storm ready? Yeah, we met it?
Yeah.
Five. Or we didn't.
Well, I mean, that's what.
And that's what I'm saying.
That's what I hear her saying.
That's what I hear her saying, too, and I don't disagree with it.
So, there we go.
But I don't want it to also be a hindrance. If we didn't get this because of Irma, that shouldn't be held against staff.
Oh, no.
He's responsible for the weather.
If you look at the matrix, that's how they do it in some of these things. They give the project, and then there's a descriptive about where they are with the project. And they also say, we weren't able to do it because we had the hurricane. It's not like you just give them a checkmark because it's not accomplished. It's, you know, it's descriptive. It's not like you just give them a checkmark because it's not accomplished, it's, you know, it's descriptive.
I understand it.
But it also emphasizes the things that we really, really, really want to see progress on. And sometimes you can't make progress unless, unless, you know, we're just, you know, we all understand that.
Unless anybody has anything glaring they want to say, Amy and Fred, workshop, have at it, come on back to us, how's that?
I want to make one comment.
Critical comment.
And that is, generally speaking, even if Irma hadn't happened, there are projects that have come up since the beginning of the year, or the, since the beginning of evaluation, that we didn't even know about, that have more importance than others that we had prioritized. So I think we have to, I think we have to, I think we can have some projects, but I think we have to have some flexibility in it. Let's give it a go, and if it doesn't work, we either have to pick one of these, or go back to the original form. And I'd recommend taking the averaging and numbers off of it and just use the descriptive.
Thanks Fred. Mike, do we have to do evaluations? Because I completely agree with Greg, that on, on a daily basis, if I'm not happy, Carl knows that, I'm going to call him, come in and talk to him, and, you know, we're, we're going to talk it out and see. Maybe he doesn't hear from me, he knows that I'm probably happy, so.
If I may, it's actually interesting, because that's where the charter reads differently for the city attorney versus the city manager. For the city manager, it's actually supposed to be a two-pronged process. Council is supposed to, shall put its goals in writing to the city manager annually, and council shall have an annual written evaluation of the performance of the city manager. For city attorney, it is not descriptive in that way. Remember, the city attorney could be a law firm elsewhere, so, um, it's just, you need to have a city attorney. It's mandatory for him, but nothing for the city attorney.
Can we just have a freestyle thing, where I just write up something, you know, I'm happy with how Carl?
It just says evaluation, it needs to have an annual written evaluation of their performance.
So, I mean, if everybody wanted to have their own form and their own criteria, then they could all do their own thing.
Which is what we did.
And, and, and again, kind of going, I think, piggybacking on what Mike said, is, is that a bad thing? Because realistically, at the end of it, I mean, it's going to have some criteria, but the proof's going to be in the pudding in what we do with their contracts. We could give them all bad evaluations and extend this contract for 10 years. I mean, that's not going to, I mean, it is what it is. So how, how we evaluate him's, each, could be up to each individual. Like you said, Peter, you did, you didn't really care for the numbers and wrote, or described it, I don't see anything wrong with that.
But as you said, it's going to be a tool.
Yes.
It's supposed to be a tool.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a tool.
Are we, are we all still in favor? I, I assume last time we didn't talk about it publicly, we're still in favor of doing that, rather than.
That's another item that.
And then empowering the mayor to, when it comes to contract time, to be our advocate.
I would be less than honest to say, I do not, I personally don't favor publicly evaluating. Now, if it was a corporation, and it was a closed board meeting, but I just think that, I don't see a lot of good out of evaluating, because if you start talking on the negative comments or the criticism, it's, I just, I don't, but that's just me. I mean, it's what, it's whatever everybody wants to do, I mean.
Okay, well, why don't you and Amy get at the form a little bit, and come on back, and we'll walk down the path.
And then you guys will have to decide what you're going to do on public.
Thanks Fred, appreciate it, okay, and we'll notice that. And Peter, you said you had.
Yeah, which is, in the last week, we received, I think, a fantastic piece of work from Jim Beaver, well, however, a hundred pages of it. I thought it was a tour de force with a whole lot of stuff in there that was really educational, before you even get to the projects. And I just thought, Peter, we should talk about how we're going to process this, we need to, obviously, for all kinds of reasons. Do we have a workshop? How do we do that? But, but I, I do think it's something we need to tackle sooner rather than later. Because, at the end of the day, they are our projects, and that's, that's what we have to arise. So, I know we have workshops coming up, right? We have the 23rd, we have the zoning workshop, but I think if anything was fodder for workshop, it would be this. And I don't know how we'd organize it, I don't know if, I mean, obviously, staff should be involved, I don't know Fred, but Peter, wherever we want to do it, we, I think we should do it.
I agree. I agree.
Obviously, we'd have to see what Jim's availability is.
And Jim, yeah, maybe Jim could lead. Yeah, maybe Jim could lead. But I, but I would like, I mean, for example, there are whole sections in here that were really eye-opening about possible sources of funding, where he actually called people. And not to say it's like some spigot. But, you know, maybe those, even staff could work with Beaver to kind of refine the presentation or something. So we have a structured presentation on, you know, at least things like maybe funding is at the end, suggested projects, this whole thing about the different basins. I, I know there were one or two basins, but I mean, he's talking about more than that, Fred, in terms of basins that historically used to not come to the Imperial River. So I understand a little bit more now when he was talking about, when he mentioned a study, because I was thinking, a study, you know? But once I read this, I kind of understood that a little more.
I think, like you said, sooner than later, because before we know it, we're going to blink and it's going to be rainy season again.
And, well, not just that, we've got whatever the mitigation money, and, you know, what we're going to do with Lee County, and all that. We need our projects.
Yeah, well, we should have the workshop, and, but we should also have people there in the audience beside just residents that have expertise to offer, and, including on these grants. A guy that the city's got on contract would probably be a good person to have in the audience. And there's another thing, we are being expected to review this, and if we have any comments, suggestions, thoughts, put it in writing and give it to them before it becomes final, final.
Well, I thought that would be the purpose of the workshop.
Also, I think, Matt had said Lee, or Carl, that Lee County had produced something.
Right, so Lee County had done the countywide study. And they have produced, I believe, a draft report at this point, too. And actually, a number of the things that, you know, the, the council has talked about, some of them are actually in the county's report as well. I've not reviewed that report though.
But that should inform the conversation, too. And, you know, maybe staff can be doing that as opposed to Jim Beaver, you know.
But it would be nice to get, get access to that, that's relevant for the city.
So I know we've got a big schedule, but I, I just think we better do it soon.
If, if we do a workshop, why wouldn't we invite the county to come in and at least address those things that they're recommending inside the city, and those that would be outside the city that could affect us?
Personally, I'd prefer for us to.
I think I'd like to understand fully what the Beaver report says.
And then we can have appropriate follow-up with the county. I mean, to me, it's toward an end of giving staff direction to sitting down with the county to present Benita Springs projects in connection with the mitigation funding.
Mayor, additionally, we, we'd like to make sure city council approved consent agenda item D, which gives us the opportunity to contract for emergency preparedness. One of those companies is Aptum, we'll be looking at all of the companies as well. And we'd be able to do a task authorization with one of those firms now ahead of time. We do know that the notice of funding has been authorized by the Department of Emergency Management at $63 million for Lee County. And we will need to move as quickly as possible in prioritizing those projects. We do know that in order to receive funding for those projects, it does have to be in the LMS, the Lee County LMS. So staff will really want to, local mitigation strategy, which would be adopted by each jurisdiction in Lee County. So we do want to have the direction of council, so that when staff is attending these meetings, we are able to have that prioritized list of our tier ones, our tier twos, you know, each of those, and we're going to have to have different criteria of projects based on that, how that funding comes out. So it would be important to have a grant consultant at this workshop as well, giving us feedback as, as Jim moves forward.
She was excellent.
Fred?
Yeah, well, since we're on the subject, number one, so everybody knows this, when the mayor and I were in Tallahassee last week, we left, we had zero dollars across the board. We were not in any appropriation bill, and it did not look real well. Since then, local matches were shown, and that helped. Apparently, at this point, we got a million and a half through Pasadena in a senate bill. But there will be a conference committee between the House and the Senate. There is rumored to be a hurricane fund, though it has not been confirmed. It's just a strong, what I call a strong rumor. The other thing that you need to know is Key West, the hardest hit, number one in the state, zero dollars. Everglade City, the only thing that they're getting is a million of federal funding to harden a school from hurricane. So we're not, we're not alone, that's what I'm trying to tell you. I think all of the people that the mayor and I have met with are all very enthusiastic. Now, what I'm, I'm coming around to a point here. Florida Forever is getting $125 million of funds that kind of came out of this, what we thought would be hurricane money. There is a good chance that we'll be able to work either with Florida Forever, or there's another, a community fund to buy some, to buy, buy some land. When I met with our South Florida Water Management people, the mayor met, every one of us had a chance to meet that were here, I asked the executive director, I said, look, we need your help, we need letters of support going up to our, not on our delegation, but the hurricane committee, the speaker, the president of the senate, and all that. He agreed to do this, now there's a slight wrinkle to it. If they send it out directly to those people, it's somehow DEP has to edit it and review it, which is going to take both time, and they may not be able to say some things. So the suggestion was made to me today by Phil Flood, that the executive director would write a letter, but it would go to the mayor. The mayor could then trans, transmit that to all these places, because otherwise, if they are going to send it up to the Tallahassee directly, it's got to do this long, long, long way around review, and all that. So they're prepared to do this, and, if that's, if that's okay with everybody. And they'll, and they will kind of, I think they may share with the mayor a draft or something, sit down with them.
What exactly are we asked for, I don't quite follow you.
To get money, we only got a million.
There has to be for a specific land or something.
Well, you're, you're, you've got your existing proposals, they're not going to, they can't write, they feel anything about the quadrant, because it's not water and floods. We do have luck there, because the governor has directed FDOT to put a major priority on evacuation routes, hurricane evacuation, so that helps the quadrant study. So what we're stuck with is, I think it's four, I think it's four asks, you've got the, the first one, which unfortunately has been referred to now as the Imperial River cleanup. And, you know, when, when they're all done, there's going to be a million two hundred grand spent on the Imperial River. It should be pretty clean. They're going back in South Florida Water Management, and they're going to go in the areas that DEP cleaned, which was only the navigable channels. And they're going to go from the edge of the navigable channel to the shore on both sides. So they're doubling back into those areas that DEP's already been in. And DEP is supposedly going to spend some money and work on Oak Creek, and I think Spring Creek. So, anyway, you've got that number one, which, one of the things in there is 1.85 million to look at all the neighborhoods by an intense study, water model, all the solutions that are recommended. Second thing that's in there is that culvert study, if you remember, not study, but inventory, and then placing undersized culverts, changing the elevation on any that are high or low, and then putting a culvert in where there's one that needs to be that isn't currently, so you've got that one. And the second one is the one of moving water south. And then the third one is the one where we would be purchasing land. And we, I think, really, everybody agrees that we would be best off not to ask them to pursue that, other than maybe saying, they would hope that, that Florida Forever and these other places would look favorably on our, on working with us. And we need to start doing that immediately. And the last one is Pine Lake Preserve, the rehydration of it.
Isn't all this part of the, the workshop that you're wanting, that we're wanting to have, so I mean.
No, 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 you, you need that letter up there now.
Well, a letter can't hurt.
No, a letter can't hurt, but I mean, all this explanation that you're going through is.
Right, and council, what I'm going to do, and I'm going to insist on this moving forward, if there's an item that's critical for this point of the meeting that you want on the agenda, put it on here. Otherwise, we're going to hold it until the back portion of mayor and council members. Because we sit up here and we opine for a half an hour, there's people on the clock out in the audience. If, if we want to sit here and opine for three hours at the end of the meeting on our council reports, that's when we're going to do it. So if you have something that's critical at this point of the meeting, make sure it's on the agenda. Otherwise, we're going to save it until our later portion on the report. And that's, I've been thinking about that, I've been getting needled and barbed about the length of meetings. So, once we're through our business, we can sit up here and dissect and split hairs for hours, if we want, but we're going to get through the agenda in a more timely manner. Is there anything else on this subject? Okay, we'll save it till later on. We're going to move on now to public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Rick, how are you?
Hey, pretty good, pretty good. I, I'm glad to hear your motion to, to not jaw bones all night long. As far as these evaluations, these two people should not be in the room while you two guys are trying to figure out how to evaluate them, in my opinion. Because they're friends, they're coworkers, and we're looking at their future and our future. And I don't think they should be in the room while you're trying to make a decision like this. I know at, at the church, alright, the pastor comes up, is he going to keep him for the year, or you're going to keep him, or you're not going to keep him? He leaves the church, and then everybody makes an open, honest vote. Now, in the fraternity house, if we didn't like somebody, we had a box we passed around, and we put pills in it. And if you get one black, one black ball, they're gone. But nobody knows where the black ball came from. If you want to hire or fire these people, you should do it on a private, secret ballot. I don't know if that's legal or not, it might not be fair, it might blindside buddy, anybody. But to sit here and, sit in judgment of these two professional people in a public meeting, it just doesn't seem right to me, and that's my opinion. And if you have a workshop, I don't think they should be there for, if you're going to work this evaluation out. So, that's my opinion, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public? Kathy, good evening.
Yes, good evening, I hate to drag this meeting on anymore, I'll be, I'll be quick. But as you all know, a lot of people have complained about the shoaling and the way the sands have drifted in the Imperial River, and some places were impassable. Well, I just wanted you to know that our vice president, the Imperial River Conservancy contacted Fish and Wildlife, DEP, and DNR, and they have said that since there is no commercial traffic on the Imperial River, that there is no jurisdiction for anybody to take care of this shoaling and dredge or whatever. That if the people who are affected by it would have to put in for a permit themselves, so that's not really good news. But I figure there's so many people that watch this, that I wanted to let all the residents who have been complaining about the shoaling on the Imperial River. So, and besides, I have a favor to ask you, as you know, Irma was not very kind to me, she took half my roof, and it's still, there's a panel still in the preserve, the 2020 preserve, and insulation and all. But that's fine, I'm, I'm comfortable, I still have the blue roof. It's taking time, it's going to get fixed. But along with all that, I had two canoes that I was storing for Janet Martin, excuse me, two kayaks, and I had a canoe that Gary Price had given me, and they went with the wind. And I've mentioned it, you know, I laughed, you know. Well, I came home last Tuesday, and there were two beautiful kayaks sitting on what's remaining of my porch. And I can't find who gave them, the Good Samaritan. So I'm asking if anyone in the public, because I don't go on social media, I don't Facebook or anything, so if anyone can find out who gave me those two beautiful kayaks, I'd like to thank them. Thanks for letting me.
Oh, absolutely.
Because I know so many people watch this, thanks Peter, thanks you all.
Bless whoever did that.
Yeah, absolutely. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Hey Ben, how you doing?
Ben Hirschen, Avonlea Drive. For the sake of full disclosure, Rick, Kathy and I do not get together before the meeting and say, you go number one tonight, you go number three, you go number two. So I just wanted to say that. The three musketeers are always marching up here. Just simply, and I'm not trying to say this to be facetious, let me start off by saying, you all do a fantastic job, okay? I mean, you're terrific people, all seven of you. That said, you asked, everybody talking about evaluations, so my question is, well, when do we evaluate city council members? Was it once every few years? Was it once every few years, I guess, when they have an election? Well, there's a long time in, in between there. So I don't know, maybe it's a suggestion, and as, I'm not being sarcastic, I'm serious. Do any of you, some of you or all of you go back to your districts every once in a while and say, "How am I doing? Where can I improve myself?" and so forth. So I'm suggesting, while we're talking evaluations, why don't you guys practice what you're trying to preach to others at this point, and that's meant in a very constructive fashion? End of comment.
Great, thank you, Ben. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the city attorney's report. Audrey.
Thank you. Let's do the first item, and then I have one item on the other end, and then I have one additional item I want to discuss with counsel. The first item is permission to advertise certain amendments to the Land Development Code, Chapter Three and Chapter Nine relating to complete streets. Now, I received a email from staff, the dates that I have in the green sheet will be moved to April 18th for the first reading and public hearing, the second reading and public hearing May 2nd, and with the local planning agency reviewing the ordinance at their April 12th meeting. So the dates that I have in there are, would be changed to those dates. At this point, I believe Alexis can begin the presentation.
Yes, I just want to clarify. For the record, Arlene Hunter, Assistant City Manager, this is a continuation of the May presentation that staff had prepared with an introduction regarding the complete streets resolution that the city council had adopted in 2014. Through the redevelopment and new development of private and public properties, we want to make sure that we're ensuring that the vision of the city council to create a complete street when those construction projects happen is carried through, not just for the management of vehicles, but for the pedestrian and the bicycle commuter as well. We did want to make sure that this process provided for the opportunity for Alta and the upcoming workshops that we have, for that we can get the feedback that we're looking from the community to participate. Any comments and feedback and process that comes through those workshops will be then incorporated into this draft as well. As a reminder, you all should have a flyer here, and we've already done an email blast out, as well as making sure that stakeholders have been specifically invited to the Alta visioning workshops, which will be a visioning for the West Terry Street Trail Project, but as well as we'll be looking for comments and feedback on trails citywide, which will be implemented into this code, as well as the future year-based optional amendments that we'll be bringing forward, and those will be March hearings as well. So there is a flyer that goes through each of the dates. Alta will be here February 27th through March 1st, so we're hoping that as many folks can participate in that process as possible. And as the city attorney stated, we then would be gathering all that feedback along with this draft and moving forward to the LPA in April and subsequent adoption hearings after that. And with that, I'd like to ask Alexis Crespo to come forward with the introduction of the item.
And Mr. Mayor, while Alexis is making her way up here, we have invited the county to participate in these meetings. The county manager has indicated that they will send representation.
Hey, great. Thank you, Carl. Hello.
Hello, good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Alexis Crespo with Baldrop Engineering, representing staff. It's a pleasure to be back before you to discuss your complete streets, land development code amendments. I want to acknowledge Lindsay Robin, who's on your bicycle pedestrian committee, also a planner that has done the heavy lifting on the ordinance. So tonight, we wanted to touch base, it's been May since we came before you last to discuss this topic. We've laid out the path moving forward, this is just permission to advertise. We do anticipate changes to the, the draft ordinance attached to your green sheet after tonight, of course, based upon public input, workshops, additional Alta review, but we wanted to give you a heads up on the key changes that you're going to see in the ordinance, also discuss some of the Alta comments we've received to date, and then get some input on some key items as we move forward. So as Arlene noted, complete streets allow for the movement of all users. A lot of the streets in southwest Florida were developed with really the vehicle in mind, and so, based on a lot of great work the city's done in various studies and documents over the past several years, we're looking to update your standards so that they recognize that in addition to vehicles, you have bicyclists, pedestrians, that need to move safely and efficiently along the streets. What Alta's doing and what other visioning studies have, have worked on as well is that your streets are beautiful public places, they're not just for moving people, but they're also great forums for you to have different landscape features and can really be a great part of the city. Also, at the forefront of any land development code amendment we prepare is that it has to be clear what is expected of the, of the applicant, what is expected in some cases the city will be implementing these standards, so that it's very straightforward of what components are in the complete street. And so one of the guiding quotes from the tool visioning study is, "We want Benita Springs to be a place, not somewhere where people just drive through quickly." So that was really at the heart of the effort we go through. And so, again, you've done a lot of work on this topic, starting back in 2014 with your complete streets resolution, you've had the visioning study completed, you have bicycle and pedestrian plan adopted last year, and then you also have an ongoing evaluation and appraisal of your comprehensive plan and associated amendments that really discuss this topic specifically. So all those documents were reviewed and analyzed to bring forth the amendments that you'll be reviewing. So what you're going to see is design standards incorporated into Chapter Three, and there's also some spillover into your Chapter Nine definition section to set forth design standards for these complete streets. They acknowledge the vehicle, the bicyclist and the pedestrian, that's going to address your, your vehicle travel lanes, that's going to address the type of drainage within the street section, bike lanes and the different forms of, of bike travel for your leisure biker, as well as your commuter biker who might want to move more quickly with the flow of traffic. Your complete street also addresses amenities such as furniture, trash receptacles, seating areas, landscape, all these components need to be incorporated into these cross-sections. You're not the first to embark upon this, Lee County recently adopted an ordinance in approximately September of 2017, implementing similar standards. And FDOT on a statewide basis updated their complete streets manual just last year as well. So we're in good company as we embark upon this update. So what you'll be seeing are going to be some updated roadway cross-sections, and this brings together really all, a voluminous 30-page text document, but again, to be clear and concise, we wanted to update these cross-sections to provide minimum, maximum widths for all these different components within your street section. So just walking you through that, you've got your furniture zones, sidewalk where your pedestrian can be located, intervening landscaping to separate that pedestrian from faster-moving bicycles and vehicles. You've got your drainage components, closed drainage because of our urban transects here in the city. Bike lanes, looking at the appropriate width of bike lanes based upon these latest standards provided to us by FDOT, ASHTO, et cetera. Looking at travel lane widths, as well as median plantings in, in some of your larger cross-sections such as arterials, and then having those, those components implemented on both sides of the street. We've also incorporated other concepts that you're going to find in your bicycle pedestrian master plan, such as multi-use pathways, providing options to do wider facilities for both bicyclists and pedestrians, in addition to the vehicle travel lane. And then we've worked with your engineering staff to create other typical sections that you're going to find within your roadway, so it's very clear what is expected in terms of, of bike lane markings, the separation between the travel lanes, et cetera. So we've worked extensively since May with your staff, planners, engineers, as well as your public works department. This has gone before your bicycle pedestrian advisory committee for input, and we have had some initial Alta review, and we look forward to getting further review from them as we move through the process. So just to summarize, their expert advice based upon the review, they had some just general comments that were quite easy to address, such as referencing the latest and greatest ASHTO, which is your American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials, and then the other acronym there is the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So making sure we're referencing the latest and greatest verbiage and diagrams in all of our sections. One item they had is, we show a painted strip to separate the bike lane from the vehicle travel lane, and they have recommended a vertical hardened separator, which we've got some examples for you to consider here. This would be the standard FDOT cross-section that they've just adopted, would have a nice wide painted strip, very clear demarcation of the bike lane. What Alta is suggesting, which is barely innovative, is having something actually vertical, creating a barricade between the vehicle travel lane and the bike lane, providing some additional safety. And this is be above and beyond some of the minimum FDOT standards.
Alexis, and what is that made of? What does it compose of?
They can be made of, this would be concrete, bollards, this is more of a, this, these are the more flexible candlestick-type separators, so you can do it in a variety of ways.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got some arrows pointing out those features there, thank you. Multi-use pathways, so they looked at those cross-sections. One of the more commonly used national terms is SUP, shared use path. So they commented that perhaps you should refer to it as a shared use path instead of a multi-use path. We are requesting that we move forward with multi-use paths, simply because that's how your bicycle pedestrian master plan defines that, that feature, that's how the tool visioning study also defines that feature, so we think consistency is important. They also suggested having a multi-use path option without traditional bike lanes on the roadway. Staff feels pretty strongly that there's different bicycle users in the city, you're going to have your, your leisure rider that's going to the beach, that's going to feel safer on the multi-use path, but someone bicycling for commuting purposes that wants to go faster really wants to be next to the vehicle travel lane in the street, so they can scoot on by people that are walking, strolling, things like that. So this, we'd like to get your input today, but the cross-section we're proposing would have both features built in. And then lastly, we applied FDOT standards for a 10 to 12-foot wide multi-use path dimension, and they're suggesting the minimum, the absolute minimum should be 11. And then on-street parking is another area we'd like to get counsel's direction on, and we're looking at where to locate the bike lane in relationship to on-street parking. So this really is for your downtown area. And so the two options being provided for is having your bike lane next to your sidewalk and internal to the parallel parking, and then you have a second option where your bike lane can be next to the travel lane with your vehicles next to the sidewalk. Alta is suggesting the option on the right-hand side of your screen, providing more protection to the bicyclist. Staff did review this and have some, some concerns for the downtown, but we will defer to counsel's direction on that.
We don't have room, Dan.
Well, isn't this a little late for downtown? We just did the road down there, so I mean, and we don't have a bike lane, because they said you shouldn't run bike lanes next to parallel parking, so.
So we do have a built environment in the downtown, but this is also any future development as well, so there has been discussion about what's going to happen from Terry Street North, any future redevelopment projects. Another example is, we've had many discussions about what will happen with the redevelopment of larger vacant parcels that are privately owned currently, and having design standards in there, so if they do have more constricted local roads, similar to how the downtown feels and looks, and they have, and they do have parallel parking on those local roads, these, these regulations would be in place for that. So this would be, so you're looking at the redevelopment and new development, so any large tracts of parcels that we've talked about that are critical, that we want to see a more urbanized look at, that we've talked about things looking similar to City Place and others, any of those redevelopments, these rules and regulations would be in place for that.
So moving forward, we're here to get direction tonight, and then we're going to have the Alta workshops at the end of February, and then we will be going to your local planning agency in April, April 12th, and then moving forward to city council for first and second reading on the draft ordinances. So with that, happy to answer questions and get some input on those items.
Great, thank you, Alexis. Counsel?
I'd like to say, it's good we have more time to digest it, so we just got it. Everything you've said about Alta makes, that they're saying makes sense to me. So, you know, the first question we asked, that's exactly what we're doing on Terry Street, right? When we, when we're building a pathway for recreational bikers, we're always taking care of the road bikers as well. And the two really don't meet, they never do meet, rarely, all right? But I think it would make sense to have, I mean, I don't know if you need to do anymore, we should take this and kind of study it, and then have some kind of feedback system. But it all makes sense.
So this was intended to be an introduction, you know, this is a lengthy document, and we still have public workshops to go through. It was an opportunity for you to ask any initial questions and to present the things that we're going to be looking for further direction on from counsel. But we have plenty of opportunity to continue that discussion. We hope to also get feedback from all different types of users during the Alta workshops as well.
Okay. So, I mean, you probably have it in here, Alexis, but there's no one-size-fits-all, it depends on what street you're talking about, right? So if we're talking about streets in Old Benita, like I said, the ones that are going north and south, down toward the elementary school, not a lot of traffic on them, that's going to be handled one way, Terry Street's handled a different way, Old 41 north of Terry would be handled yet another way, Beach Road would be different. So I'm assuming from what you're saying, there are different suggestions for patterns of, in this document.
Yes, we have, we, we have condensed it down to a local street section, an arterial and a collector.
Okay, right.
With a priority of key elements, so that we understand there are some rights of way that are constrained, that aren't going to be able to do the 12-foot multi-use path, the sidewalk.
Right.
So we've created a kind of a menu approach where we can work with each unique street as it comes online.
Well, thank you.
I, I think actually it said that Alta was saying not to do the bike path on the road, and just to do the multi-use path, but I agree with Peter, we need the on.
Yeah, correct. That was where we asked Alexis to point out the comment, is that they had suggested that we might necessarily have to separate that, and that's when staff had a concern, because we have such a large influx of road bikers.
They were saying, "Don't handle the road bikers on the road?"
To the, I think to the extent that it was an either/or.
Oh, all right.
But we're, we're happy to create a great cross-section that addresses every kind of user, and then work through the right-of-way constraints on a unique, individual basis.
So the staff recommendation would just be a little bit more restrictive than what Alta was suggesting. Instead of an either/or, it would be, it's required, unless...
Unless it's not possible.
Unless it's not possible, which would be a betterment plan, which would be worked out with staff.
Thanks, Mike.
Right. Counsel, anything else?
Just how would you connect all these things, you know, if you go from one design to another? I mean, that would limit...
There's a word for it.
Typically, the roadway will stay designated the same classification, so it would need to be true it is an arterial from start to finish.
Because like 41 beyond Terry is different from Old 41, there'd have to be, either you have to use the same thing the, the whole way, correct?
Correct, because it would be an arterial roadway, so it would have the same requirements along the length of that roadway, and then there would be discretion as to how it would transition from different segments.
Because Old 41, you couldn't have any of these separate bike lanes, but you could conceivably have it beyond Terry Street.
Conceivably.
Correct? So that would be an issue.
Okay, great. Audrey, anything else on this, or for now?
No, just the dates, you have it, and we'll just have the marijuana ordinance, the, sorry, the ordinance continuation, the temporary moratorium will be the other item on the, that will go for public hearings at the date scheduled.
So we're not advertising this yet?
No.
Right.
Do you want the motion to advertise now, or no?
No, sir.
I want you to hear the presentation and agree to the new dates.
One thing, though, I will just chime in here as a safety and someone who drives big trucks, we need to keep the travel lanes as wide as possible. I know just with downtown and the bikes and stuff like that with the fire trucks, it's going to be, you know, it's a little precarious trying to get down there, there's nowhere for anybody to go, and we, I just keep them as wide as possible. Can't shrink the trucks.
Really?
Yeah, so, anyway.
We can go over the median.
We can go over to median.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Audrey, the errata sheet.
Yes, before we do that, let's just finish.
Thank you Alexis, sorry Audrey.
One comment on the evaluation forms for city manager and city attorney. I reviewed Resolution 1738, which was the amendment to the administrative code to set up standing committees. So first of all, the standing committee that has been established is the Planning and Finance Standing Committee. I presume that will be the entity meeting because otherwise we need a resolution to set up a new committee. Is council okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, I want to hear that.
Sounds good.
And then the second part, and consistent with the comments by Mr. Steinmeier, the city charter requires that the city attorney be in attendance at all city council meetings, and that would include standing committees. However, in the standing committees, we have language and it's consistent with the charter. You have the ability to excuse me from attendance. If you can make that motion to excuse, but it's city council, it's not the standing committee. If I can have that motion to excuse me from attendance, I will be happily not to attend the evaluation discussions.
So moved.
So moved, second.
We're not discussing any specifics other than concepts, right?
Well, if you want me there or not want me there.
I don't want you there, I'm just telling you, I don't not that I don't want you there, we don't need you there.
I understand, and I'm okay with that.
But it's nothing, we're not talking, we're not personalizing.
We're not talking about you.
No, I understand, I'm trying to make sure we follow our procedures, right.
Okay, roll call please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Saka? Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
And during your meeting, I just, there'll be some other things, and I'll just give instructions to the clerk when she sets up the meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks. Now to the errata item. This is something where I guess I received, or I found out the clerk received a notice that we have a freebie, which is a new policy implemented by Supervisor of Election Tommy Doyle. You received an email later this afternoon on the subject. And this would be to place one referendum item on the primary election ballot, which is August 28th, 2018. I did receive from Bernie Feliciano, the deputy for that office, as to what would be allowed, what's not allowed. And the main thing for you to realize is that they would want language for the ballot April 30th. And I looked at our charter, I looked at the state statute on charter amendments. I do not think we could meet that deadline for one item. And I don't know if you'd want to do that because you are compelled to have a charter review committee for the 2020. So I plan to bring that back to city council for discussion sometime in May to start the establishment of that. But if you want anything for the August 28th date, like I said, it could be one item, and it could be like a straw ballot if there's an issue of interest that you would want, not a charter amendment, but an issue of interest that you would want the voters to weigh upon for city council. You can do so. You don't have to give me tonight, the subjects matter, but if you do want me to do further research or information on this, I'll be happy to do so. If not, that's fine too.
Council?
Audrey, are you saying that city council cannot vote on an amendment to the charter to be placed on the ballot in August?
I'm saying that based on the timeframe to do so, you're allowed one question.
Okay.
I would have to have that.
I thought you, I thought you were referring it back to, we had to have a committee first.
No, no, but if you wanted to set up the committee, the time compression would be almost impossible. And it's only, since it's only one question, they would allow.
Yeah.
This is about 100, I mean, if you wanted to have one question and you knew exactly that question, we could take that and add it to the agenda or have that question looked at and do an ordinance before the April 30th deadline. But that gives very narrow window of time to work on that question. The better approach, if you did want to use the one question, would be not to do a charter amendment, but if you had a straw ballot, it could be a downtown question. It could be a beach question, a DRGR question.
A water tower question.
Water, right.
But the reality is, we can do whatever we want.
Right.
One question, right.
One question, understood, understood, but just trying to separate the wheat from the chaff here.
One question for free by the supervisor of election, not too controversial because again, we would have
Could it be about football? Taking a knee? Can we?
I suppose if you were wanting to build a football complex or something.
Did he give us a statement about, will we be allowed to put something on the November ballot if we want to?
He did inform us that November, because of the complications, would not be open to this policy, just the primary.
A lot going on, yep.
And then of course, 2020 is when we would do our normal charter review committee, meaning sometime in May, we'll start working on establishment, we probably need some money. In the past, the city council has retained a political science professor to assist with charter amendments and assist the committee. You know, that's up to you guys, and we'll talk more about that in May with the charter review committee. But if you wanted one question and you knew smack dab, this is it, we want it, you could do it. Just realize that without it being completely vetted, it would be hard to bring that question back to the voters at 2020. So there's risk involved in that. And then I would think the better, more appropriate would be, if you wanted to use it, you don't have to use this, but if you wanted to, you could ask a, and the language I talked about, the sentiment of the voters is straight out of statute. And that's typical of a straw ballot, so it's a question, a non-binding. Should council do X or should council do Y?
Okay, well, council, let's give that some thought. Independently, of course.
And if you want something scheduled, let me know. If not, that's fine too, just recognize we're on a very short timeframe.
Okay, and we'll need to have the idea framed by April 30th?
No, you would have to have the ordinance or resolution adopted by April 30th.
So back that out, what does that mean? If we were going to do something, when would we walk through the time process, Audrey?
Earlier better than later, so that, I mean, I know that I can count to 15, I can count to 75. I know how to write yes and no, but these are ballot prerequisites. But it's something where I would want somebody who is better-versed in referendum and election law, and that's what I've done in the past, is take it to my elections lawyer. He has since passed away, so I would have to find someone.
Okay.
Again, why does it have to be an ordinance?
State statute 166.031, as well as the city charter. If it's a charter amendment, it needs to be by ordinance. So if you back in the ordinance time, like, let's say you wanted to amend the charter to change the function of the city attorney. I'm making that up, I'm hoping you're not playing with that. You would need to, but I wanted to give an example of something in the charter.
But the bottom line, Audrey, and I said it earlier, we can do whatever we want. But it's one question.
Right.
And I think that's good for now, that's all we need to know. We don't need to complicate it, and I'm not
No, 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 but what I'm saying is if you needed to make an amendment to the charter, it needs to be by ordinance. But if it's something that's not a charter amendment, you know, it has to be a legal question. I need to, I could do it by resolution, and that would give us till the last meeting of April to frame the issue. Otherwise, I need to frame the issue pretty much in March.
Okay.
So charter needs to be done ASAP. If we want to call the question for anything other than charter, we can do it as far out as April.
Could we not do this? We come to you first part of, what was it, April or whatever the date was. We give you what we want, we get the wording worked out, and then we do, we send the wording to him. We can always recant it, and then we pass the ordinance. That would be legal, I believe, because it hasn't got on the ballots yet.
If we're going to do a charter
They have told me April 30th is my drop dead date. There's advertising, I understand what you're saying, and we've done that in the past when we've run very tight on the timeframe.
Have any interest in changing?
We've done like a resolution so they have our wording, and then we've provided them the official document after. But no guarantees that he would accept it.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have any interest in changing the charter? I don't at this next one. If somebody does, then work on it.
Yeah, because if, I mean, if the review committee was going to be four or five years from now, different story. But if it's going to be next year? Because it can always be changed back at the review committee.
I mean, I don't have a topic for that, so.
I think you summed it up good.
Yep, I think we summed it up, and that's why, Audrey, I just wanted, we can do what we want, is the bottom line. We don't need to murky the water. Okay, moving right along, city managers' report, Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got several items tonight that I want to cover, so I'll get to it right away. So items A and B are reports that we've sent you on a regular basis. Should you have any questions, we stand ready for those. Okay, I heard a no, okay. The third item was an update on communications with the county on the quadrant plan. The mayor had asked for this, and basically, we have had multiple meetings with the county over the last few weeks. I had a meeting with the county manager and assistant county manager Brady. It was a very positive meeting, we covered a number of issues. This was just one of them. And basically, there were more questions about, well, what about, you know, the quadrant plan? Well, are you going on a road diet? No, we're not doing a road diet, okay? So, you know, number one. And number two, we're not asking for the county for any money on this. At this point? At this point, we're not, all right? So the bottom line was, try to address any questions there had, they had. Matt had a relatively positive meeting, is he back there? Okay, so Matt had a good meeting with the staff over there. And we're talking about directors of DOT as well as community development, Dave Loveland and Randy Searchy. And he indicated that really, he left the meeting with a better understanding. They understood better about the fact that we're really looking for an at-grade solution, context-based, where we are preserving and creating right-of-ways for roadways that are going to be city roadways, okay? And they're going to be connecting to other city streets. And that really, the only part that the county might be involved in is if the design on the west side, okay, includes a roundabout or lengthening of a left-turn queue lane. So, and I think that gave them some comfort, okay? And Matt, if you think I need to add anything else, I'm trying to keep it high level, or if council has additional, you good, Matt?
Yes.
Okay, so they have been positive meetings, the county has been receptive. Whether that changes any of the staff's, the county staff's concerns about the project, we don't know about that, but I think they had, certainly had a better understanding on what's going on. The next item on the agenda was an update
I'll just take a minute and compliment Carl and Matt particularly, and Arlene for a year and a half's worth of work and communication with the county on this whole project. And more to come, but thank you.
Right, and we also made it clear that we are working with the MPO, the MPO staff. And we are working with, the highest level is the DOT in this district about moving the quadrant plan forward. And we are headed for, the MPO is headed for a vote, critical vote on February 16th, about getting this at-grade solution in our city onto the 2040 list so that we will have more access to state and federal funding. And I say that because if that vote is positive that day, our intention is to immediately notify Carol Green because that would certainly help us in this session with regards to the quadrant plan up at the state legislature. So that's where we're at, all right?
Good job, Carl. And actually, to add to that, that's the recommendation of F.D. District 1. It's not just the support, it's the recommendation.
What time's that meeting, is that 2?
No, no, it's 9:00 AM.
Somehow I saw it as 2, but.
We'll have more to say after the meeting, but there's been a lot of hard work put in by a lot of people.
The next item was an update on the feasibility study for the beach access on Big Hickory. And first off, one of the items we talked to the county manager about was the report that Hans Wilson had provided to us previously with regards to the possibility of three paths on Big Hickory. And they were very clear that while they understand the city's request that we will not get a county staff recommendation for any of those paths on Big Hickory to get to the beach for better beach access. Their concern is it's a preserve area, they do not want that disturbed. They're also concerned about what additional traffic, people traffic on that part of the beach would do to the beach. And so we've just been advised that we will not get a county staff recommendation on that, and that should the council wish to pursue it further, it would have to be elected board to elected board, all right? And also, as it relates to this, and I probably need to offer an apology here, but there was some concern expressed by Pelican Landing community that if this would have gone forward, or if it goes forward, that there would be an opportunity for that beach traffic to actually walk the beach up north into the privately-owned area that Pelican Landing uses as their recreational area. And as you can see, we probably did not talk about this, and I think there was a misunderstanding. And so I just want to be clear that, and I want to point this out probably. Where's my clicker here? Is this the pointer? Okay, here we go, all right.
Pointing it out.
So the area we're talking about is right here, all right? The area we're talking about is right here. And this area is clearly accessible all the way up into this area, which is the Pelican Landing area. However, it's accessible, and you can't see it here, at low tide. Okay, so when you have low tide, you definitely have accessibility. When the water is up higher, then you've got mangroves that really make it difficult to get to the north, all right? So I just want to put it on the record, make it clear. But the fact of the matter is, at this point, we were going to have some difficulties at the county staff level on this project, should the council wish to move forward. Any more questions about that?
Other than we
I just want to thank Carl because obviously Pelican Landing had a little heat over this, let's put it that way, and all kinds of emails going around, and I am thankful that we clarified that. I myself was confused because every time I've been on the Pelican Landing beach, I've walked all the way. We always call it an island, and I guess I've never been there during low tide because I never, I could walk entirely around that island. So I only knew it as an island, so I was kind of surprised that it was connected, so thank you for clarifying that.
Sure, happy to do that, and we're sorry for the miscommunication on that. The next item that the mayor asked for a report on, we're always happy to do these, by the way. So anytime you want these things done in a meeting, we're happy to do that. So is our legislative priorities. I'm not going to repeat, I think Councilmember Forbes did a great job of explaining exactly where we're at with regards to priorities number one, two, and three on our legislative funding list. I think, I mean, he's dead-on, and he's exactly right. Now, on number four, which is Pine Lake Preserve, we don't seem to be getting any traction on that particular project up in Tallahassee. And right now, we have $950,000 in our budget to do this project, okay? When it comes ready to do and the permits are ready to go. When we started talking about match dollars, I had actually proposed that that $950,000 be moved away from Pine Lake Preserve and to be put in, if we need it, if we get it and we need it, put it into part of that match money. Because we're looking at the possibility, depending on how much money we're involved in, as much as $2 million in match in Tallahassee, and we just don't have very many places to go. Because you know our funds are going to be depleted here as we continue to pay for Irma. But anyway, so I just want to make you aware that that probably is not realistic to expect number four, Pine Lake Preserve, to go forward. But again, if we can get significant dollars in one, two, and three up here, certainly that would more than pay for itself. And then, I've already talked about the quadrant plan, and we are looking for this MPO vote, hopefully to go positive in terms of getting back on the list, and that would help us in our quest for transportation dollars in this session. in this session in Tallahassee.
But it would also help us independent of that.
That is correct, absolutely, absolutely.
That's the thing at the MPO.
Right. By the way, I do want to thank the Mayor Simmons as well as councilmembers Forbes and DeWitt in their travels to Tallahassee and testifying before committees, meeting with staff, meeting with elected officials up there. That is so important, and we appreciate the time and effort it takes for them to go up there this session. So, and Carol's on notice, our lobbyist is on notice, that, hey, you know, if you need anything, please call us and let us know. I've got another item here, and that is to, the mayor had talked about the possibility that we need to prioritize our South Florida Water Management District priorities. As you know, we've already submitted a list to the South Florida Water Management Executive Director. Council has authorized me to negotiate an MOU with them. They are interested in doing that. I think they want to go through a little bit of a process in talking to some of the stakeholders involved before we get serious about doing that. But I will tell you that the executive director is in favor of us entering into that, and that's a good, that's just a good thing. So, I think we'll get there. In response to the mayor's concern about doing priorities here, I have a handout for you. Thank you. This is a two-page handout. The first one is the list that we gave directly to the executive director. And the mayor did this at his meeting, all right? And it's titled "The Original List," all right? And then, in terms of priorities, if you take a look at page number two, okay? We have the same projects on there. We've just put them in a different order. And that is going through, Matt taking a look at this list. And this is simply our recommendation for council to look at. You don't have to do anything with this tonight, other than receive it, take a look at it. We can talk about it at a later date, but this is staff's recommendations for priorities for that particular item.
Thank you.
I want to tell you that we, Impact Fee Study is getting ready to be commenced.
Carl, let me actually interrupt you there a second.
I'm sorry, sure.
No, 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 just because it's, the timing is good. Obviously, certain members of council met with Ernie Marks, the executive director of South Water Florida, South Florida Water Management District. I have, you know, met with Jamie from the area, have spoken with Jamie, continued to follow up with him, spoke with him recently as this morning, spoke with Ernie Marks since I met with him, have handwritten them notes. And there's a good dialogue going on, is what I'm saying. So, I think, and I know other councilmembers have done that as well, they are, they are looking for our priorities. And they'd like to dovetail that into, if they can make recommendations prior to March up in Tallahassee, to dovetail into our already-existing legislative priorities. If we can meld those two cakes, so to speak, into one, they will do that. They will do that, but they're looking for us to give them that direction. And we can do that tonight, we can do it at the next meeting, we can do it when you'd like. But obviously, the legislative session is drawing to a close. So, the sooner we can do that with them, they've made that offer that they will do that, they're happy to do that. So, I just throw that out there to council.
Do it tonight?
Well, I'll tell you, the mayor makes a good point that if you wait until your next meeting, which is not until the 21st, we're really going to be hurting on time.
So, let's do it tonight.
So, whatever you would like, whatever direction you'd like to provide tonight, that would be fine, too.
Counsel, what do you think? Yeah, no. And we've all been involved in the process, but Fred, why don't I start with you? You've been involved, I mean, in other words, if we hand South Florida our wish list that they will make recommendations to Tallahassee, what would we want it to be? Not some big exorbitant thing, but a few priorities.
I think the number, what we used to have as number one, minus the Imperial River cleanup, would still be probably our number one because that's got the money for the, doing all the studies of all the neighborhoods, actually implementing, doing a big water model of the whole city to evaluate all these solutions, good, bad, or indifferent. Then I think the number two would be moving the water south. And I think, I don't, I know Carol Green, even Phil Flood both believe that there's not, that they can lobby for number three in their thing, but the odds are if we're going to get any money for buying land, unless the hurricane thing comes through, it's going to be from Florida forever or that community thing, so.
So, Mayor, in the interest of time, if I might make a suggestion. We clearly have this list here that we've already sent to them, which are things, this is basically our wish list for the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding, of what we'd like them to take off. This is page-
Page two.
This is the pri, this is the staff's recommended priority, yeah, all right? But if you would want, if council agrees that number one of our Tallahassee funding requests, which is a separate list, right? If you go along with what Councilmember Forbes recommended and do this entire thing except for the Imperial River, and you do number two, which is a version of moving water southward, we could take the South Florida Water Management District list and whatever that is, we can marry it to these priorities for our requests, if that's what council's directive is.
Are we saying we're not going to suggest doing four? And we may not get it, but I mean, that's a big part of what we want.
What, number?
Four, yeah.
Yeah.
No, not four, five, purchase of property.
Look at page two, Peter, yeah, I know.
Oh, I'm on the wrong one?
Yeah, look, just flip it over.
It's all the same things, it's just in different order.
I think it's a different order, yes.
So, number, the second page is, okay.
Number two, thank you.
I would support what Carl has indicated, priority-wise.
Wait, 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 can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, we're not, number two is in there or not? On page two.
In Tallahassee?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Oh, okay, good, yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, good.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep. Are you gonna, you're putting purchasing of land above the other stuff? Is that what number two is? What I had said was, I think, number one would be, our old number one, minus the Imperial River, number two would be moving the water south, and then three would be the potential purchase of land. Although, they're all saying the odds are our best bet to get money for that will be from Florida forever.
We're trying to move a ball forward, right? I'm not saying it's, we may be on our own 20, but let's try to move the ball. I mean, this, this number one and Logan have been kicking around for four months, and everybody seems to like it. But we're trying to do more than that.
Minus Imperial River.
Well, so, maybe we should simplify this, okay? We're trying to marry two lists here. Maybe we just, the MOU list, we don't worry about right this second. And for Tallahassee purposes, we maintain our current list, which is number one, minus Imperial River. And then, number two, all right, is construct Logan Boulevard. I am not working off the priorities list.
Okay, all right, we'll go back to page one.
Sorry, I'm sorry. We're not working off page one either. Working off a page that you don't have. This is the Tallahassee list.
Just go ahead.
So, basically, tell them, look, we want one without Imperial River. We still want number two, which is moving water south, okay? And number three, land acquisition. And, I mean, it seems to me that we could just make it simple.
And they fit right into our priorities? We've been beating the drum on our priorities, and now South Florida can help us beat that drum.
And that's what they want to do.
And they've got a big, and they've got a big voice. So, let's face it, right?
I'd like to include the language you have in number five or number two with respect to the purchase.
Yes.
Because, for example, Benita Springs Golf and Country Club is also in the county's report. So, put some meat on the bones, is what I'm saying, on the purchase of land. And the DRGR, that's all. Just put meat on the bones.
Got you. All right, so we're gonna use some verbiage from the-
Two or five, whatever you want.
From the, number two on the priority list.
Staff priority list.
On the Tallahassee funding list.
You know what you're saying.
Yeah.
Quick question, the $900,000 from Pine Lake, where are we going to allocate that on the priority list? Where are we moving that money to? One, two, or three?
We would move it, what is recommended right now, because you know the numbers, the offers have been reduced based upon a discussion with some of the legislators, legislative folks. We're offering a 15% match on the money we get. And that, that $950,000 for Pine Lake would go into that pot to provide the match. A portion of the match, it won't cover it all, right?
I've got a question about Logan, which is, I've seen stuff, and I forget where, where the emphasis does not seem to be on water from the north, it just seems to be on water from the swell. Where are we on that? Are people, are people serious about moving water from north of Benita Beach Road under? Who's serious about it?
South Florida.
They are. Wonderful, okay, thank you.
There's piping proposed.
Well, I know about the piping, but my question is the Water Management District.
Matt Feeney, for the record, Public Works Director. Yes, the discussions we've had with the Water Management District about anything with Logan Boulevard or east, but really Logan Boulevard, is always had a component of moving water from the large watershed north of Benita Beach Road south.
Okay.
So, and that's what the pipes that Carl referenced are.
That's good to hear.
But they still have to get permission to do that, right?
And how big the pipes and the size.
Because they still have to figure out how much water, and we, and I, from our meetings with them, I think they suggested that they were going to put the sluice gates in, but they weren't going to open them up until, except at an emergency, until they work out these technicalities.
Correct. The sizing of the pipe that your design engineer for Logan pretty well has that understanding. We want the Water Management District to give it kind of a second review to say, yes, you've sized this correctly for what we think can go down there. They're willing to do that, they've been talking to us about that. And then, to operate this system in the future, you would need some pretty sizable permits and obviously stakeholder input from the south. And that's a much, you know, larger kind of heavy lifting. But the district has been agreeable thus far to the idea that, kind of like Field of Dreams, if you've seen the movie, that you can build it, and then we can work on the permitting and operation component as time permits in the future.
And if I could add, when you need it is in an emergency. And when you have an emergency, they can go and do something that even the chorus said no to. So, it's-
Great, so thanks, counsel, for that, and thanks, Carl, for that. Sorry, but I figured that was a good time to-
That was great, thank you, Mayor. Got a couple more items real quick. So, Impact Fee Study is going to commence. We have a meeting this week with the consultant. We've already been, had a request for information from the consultant, 15 different items across a number of different departments. We will be supplying that. I think all of you have seen the results of the Impact Fee Studies up in Lee County, what that meant to those rates up there. Of course, we're going to do our own unique study here to see what it means here as well. I do want to mention to the council, however, that in order to ensure that we have appropriate funding for any of the appropriate projects in the future, you're probably going to need to add projects to your CIP list. Doesn't mean you're necessarily going to absolutely do them someday or fund them right away, but they need to be in your CIP, whether you want to do them right now or not, so that the consultant can consider those projects when he's doing this study, all right? And that's for the next five years. Just do a check for the next five years. So, I just want to make you aware that that may be coming forward for council to consider in the future, pretty soon, actually. Last thing I have is I want to congratulate Nicole and her entire team for the work they've done on Marni. It was obviously an issue at the last meeting. We had two good meetings, one with FEMA who did their final inspection there, as well as our loss consultant. And if you drive down there, there was, they've done a great job on the fence. I mean, unless you're looking for it, it's difficult to see if it was even damaged. The, the, the south fields are open already, they were open this last weekend, and the north fields will be open for full play this coming weekend. So, Nicole and your team, thank you very much, great job, appreciate that. And then, the last thing that the mayor asked for was some update on our grants and those kinds of things, what kind of money we're going to get, applications, those kinds of things. There's obviously a lot of processes involved. Arlene's mentioned a little bit about it, but I'd like her to follow up, so go ahead.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Thank you, Carl.
As of February 5th, Monday, February 5th, the Florida Division of Emergency Management has issued the official notice of Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Notice of Funding Availability. Within that declaration, Lee County has been an estimated allocation of $63 million. From that, there would be a 25% state and local match. As we've been fully aware of the process along the way, we have to have projects that are identified in the jurisdiction's local mitigation strategy, which is an actual document that is worked on by each of the municipalities in Lee County, as well as Lee County as well. That program will include tier-one projects and tier-two projects. The tier-one projects will need to be ranked in order of priority of funding. So, they would be looking at projects countywide and each of the jurisdictions as well. Those would be ranked, and then upon any additional fundings after that, they would be looking at tier-two projects. So, we will be needing the direction of council on prioritization of our projects, funding levels, whether they be tier-one, tier-two, and priority-wise. And we probably need options when we are moving forward through that process. The city manager and myself both have been in touch with the Lee County Emergency Management Operations Team to reiterate our concern about the existing LMS and the projects that are identified in there as well. Additionally, the city manager has had conversations with the county manager regarding our interest to open up that document as quickly as possible. We also are aware that there'll be community development block grant, hazard mitigation grants that will become available. Those could possibly be utilized as a match to the, to the local jurisdictions' match for the hazard mitigation grants. Upon the approval of tonight's consent agenda item, we'll be looking to look for a task authorization to move forward with one of the emergency preparedness firms to begin helping staff in the prioritization process so that we're following the process along as it needs to be done, and each of the, each of the items are checked off. And additionally, we can begin preparing the grant applications under the approval that was just approved tonight by city council. We can begin some grant preparations. Those are not necessarily fundable back from the actual grant applications. As we move forward and we determine that our projects can be funded, the next step would be to do a request for proposals for our firm to help administer the grants through the process. Staff will be asking for that direction because this is a very tedious and complicated process. We would be looking for the direction and expertise of folks who specialize directly in that. And that, they would be responsible for helping us through the auditing process, the implementation of those projects, and it would be a multi-year process, planning, designing, and then construction.
Okay, thank you. And Jim, you, will you come up, please, because you've been involved in this process and you've got a lot of experience? Can you give us a couple-minute blow-by-blow where we are in the process? Are we ahead of the eight ball, behind the eight ball, right on target? Where is Benita Springs in, in the chase for this money?
Good evening, council, Jim Von Rintown for the record. I think you're, you're on the eight ball.
We're on it.
Yeah, you're, you haven't missed any opportunities yet, but you need to, hopefully you can get the consultants here quickly and they can get on it. You know, so it's an ongoing process, you haven't missed any opportunities yet, but they do need to be working on those applications, and you need to be working with the county and the state and getting the paperwork in front of them and going through your process of sort of gleaning out, you know, what the priorities are, and what are tier-one, what are tier-two. But you haven't missed anything yet, but you do need to sort of get on it.
Okay. Will you signal out to me and to Carl and to Arlene? Will you signal out to me, and to Carl, and to Arlene?
We've been in communications, and this is a big step to get ABTEM on it initially to, to do that. There may even be opportunities with the money you spend with them upfront to use in some way as a global match or in-kind. So they're the experts on that, and they'll not only be on these hazard mitigation grant funds and the, the community block grants, but there's a whole plethora of other grants that you need to get them sorting through. And, and some of these projects that may not be funded by the state that you're hoping for state funding from, you may be able to actually get through some of these other grant opportunities. So, the sooner you get them on it, the better. But you haven't missed anything yet.
Okay.
And your staff has done a great job of sort of lining that up, so proceed.
Okay, great. Amy, did you have a question?
I have two questions. One, us, us, well, really to Arlene. Some of the recommendations that came, come, is come, coming out of the Beaver Report are kind of relatively small projects. Could we also apply for that, or is it just going to be confined to these larger projects?
So that would be the direction we'd be looking for, a Tier 2 project. So, we, we want to make sure that the, that the number-one priorities are clearly listed, and we get those in the Tier 1 level, and they need to be, they will be looked at countywide as, they'll be prioritized countywide. And then there'll be the opportunity for Tier 2 projects. And what I also understand is, we need to have all of our projects, whether they're, however they're prioritized in the LMS, so that we can open doors for other funding opportunities through other agencies beyond the HMGP program, and, including the CDBGH, Hazard Mitigation Program, and, and other state and federal opportunities that end up opening their door. But we want to make sure that all of these projects are identified in the, in the LMS.
And it's a process, so that you don't get too excited about how it initially sort of lays out, because there'll be a lot of movement, and, you know, negotiation.
We should basically apply for everything that we can that fits into, because I know when you gave the presentation, there were lots of specific...
You should identify all the projects, and then with the consultants, and along with any help I can provide, look for opportunities to fit them into grants where they have the best chance of funding. So you absolutely want to sort of lay everything out on the table and start looking for where they fit, where they definitely don't fit, and then, you know, you don't want to waste effort and energy on trying to get a project funded through the wrong grant. But there, you have enough projects that you'll be able to, I think, you know, cover the field pretty well. But it is quite an effort, it does take quite a bit of paperwork. It's, you're dealing with the state and the feds, and, you know, they're quite bureaucratic about who they give, how they give their money out.
So basically, it doesn't hurt you if you put a million balls up in the air?
No, no, it just, you have to keep track of them, and that's where the consultants come in, and...
We need to keep track, and we need to be prioritizing which, which projects best fit each program, so...
It's competitive, so you want to make sure you're in there at every meeting, and you're watching what everybody else is up to, and, you know, keeping an eye on everything.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions?
Well, what do you want to do about Beaver as it relates to this?
Council, what's your, what do you think?
I would do all 15.
Well, we don't know what the project saw, we haven't even seen it.
No, but we could, but we should at least get them on the list, and then we could prioritize.
So the Council decided to have a workshop with...
We did, we had, that was cut off for later discussion, that's why I'm raising it.
So, after the workshop, we should, when is the workshop?
We didn't discuss it.
Yet to come.
Yet to come, right. But maybe yet is now, is that all right, to talk about it now? So what do you want to do?
Yeah, no, look, you, you may be annoyed, but I have been dinged for months about Council member items. We're going to keep Council member items, if they're not on the agenda, till this part of the meeting.
No, that's...
I'm sorry if that upset you.
No, 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 it's not a matter of that. It's a matter of, there have been about 15 items that have not been on the agenda that we've talked about.
Moving forward, I just want to be clear on that.
And so Council member items were meant to be substantive items up front, so they weren't buried at the back, and reports at the back.
Right. If you want something on there, make sure it's there. If not, we're going to hold it till the end.
Fine. So, is now the time to talk about the Beaver Report?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, go ahead. I'm not, I'm not, that's fine, I'm just, yeah.
Okay, well, Carl, are you done? Jim, do you have anything to add, or anything more, questions for Jim? Anything for City Manager's report?
Right, that's where we're at right now, City Manager's report. Any other questions on this? Okay, that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Now, Mayor and Council member items. Peter, why don't we start with you?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Mike?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay, Fred?
Yeah, I just, I want to bring up two things that is kind of a continuation of our first discussion. I would like Amy, when we, when she comes to the meeting that we're going to have, that she would bring a draft of how this thing would work. Because if we, if we end up sitting there trying to figure that out, it's just going to take a whole lot longer. I've, I've developed things and brought them in and all that, so why don't you do that? Now, the other thing, before we have the meeting, I want to show hands. How many, without discussion, because this is an official vote, how many of you would favor a public evaluation agenda item? Raise your hand.
Don't know.
Yeah, don't know.
Don't know. Depends on the situation.
I'm against it. Anybody else?
I'm not saying I'm for it, I'm just, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
We want to think about it.
I think Greg's points were, I think it was Greg, it was your points, were well-taken about. It's a sensitive issue. But the odd thing is, we have a sunshine law, and the sunshine law requires us to talk about stuff in public.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking about the evaluation part of, Fred, on your discussion, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't see the necessity to discuss in the public. I mean, if I have a problem with Carl, and I, I can tell you what the Fire Board does, is they meet one-on-one with Chief Daigle, and they give him his evaluation. If that's what we desired, I think that's what we should do.
But we kind of do do that.
Yeah, that's what we do, we submit them to, to Meg.
Right.
And, and if we have a personal thing that we want to talk to the city manager or city attorney, make an appointment, go talk to them about it.
Right.
So we don't go on, we'll just decide that at the meeting, that we look at the...
Sounds good. Fred, other items? No? Amy?
Very quick, I just want to list all the things that I've been doing, so no one thinks I'm just taking it easy here. I did have an interesting meeting, an informational meeting with NCH, who is, now has an application to put a 24-hour emergency room just north of where the ship used to be, you know, where Diamond Oaks is, and that was just very interesting. I did attend the meeting at Worthington, where South Florida Water Management gave their, and others gave their review of the, what happened in the hurricane, and what they're doing going forward. And I also attended the meeting at the Big Carlos Bridge, where we saw the models of what the proposals are, and there were some questions that were raised, and I'm, and I want to thank Jim Beaver here, because I had some questions about the technical aspects of what was presented, and he's been very helpful there. And I think we're like nine months away of deciding what bridge to do and where it's going to go, so there's some time, but there'll be a follow-up to that, where we can have more public meeting on that. And also, coincidentally, I'm, I'm taking a landscape course at Everglades Wonder Garden, but I wanted to shout out to Sean Gibbons from our staff here, who gave a presentation there, and I'm telling you, he really represented the city so well in telling us things about landscaping having to do with the city and the permitting there and all that. So he, he was very impressive, but I just wanted to tell him about that. Another shout-out to, to Matt Feeny, because we just got an email today about residents in Pinfish, where he's doing a drainage project, and they're very happy with him, and it was a really positive email. I just want to share that with everybody publicly. So thank you for the good work, staff, and let's keep it up, and we want to only hear good news. Not really, but, but it's nice to hear it, very good work, so that's me.
Great, thank you, Amy. Greg?
No, I just want to tell staff they're doing a great job, and also, basically say to Carl that, you can beta Carol, if they need us to go back to Tallahassee, I think, I know with myself and the mayor and Councilman Forbes, we're not afraid to make that short six-hour drive to hear us, hear our point made up there. And if they can do anything, and also I'll continue to work behind the scenes on the NPO projects.
Great, thank you. Steve?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that Arlene and I attended the open house for the new firehouse, and I have to say that District 6 ought to be proud of the tons of people that were standing only. So, nice job, okay, chief. Also, what I'd like to, I had a couple emails, I don't know, over this past week, from two beach people, I know that, but they put their address there from Hickory Boulevard. And, Peter, I know you've been working on it, but they would like to know about those beaches.
Yeah, I think, I think I said something around, so what happened was that, as you know, we're, just, you know, but not everybody knows, we're in Lee County, we're not in Collier County. We pay taxes to Lee County, not to Collier. So whatever, so whatever Collier would do, would be something that would be gracious. So I want to put that in context. So, Bert Saunders was very gracious about exploring the possibility that we would have possibly a beach pass for the residents of Benita Springs, in spite of the fact that Collier has cut those off for anybody, frankly, who seems to not be, you have to be a taxpayer down in Collier. What happened was that, when he consulted with their staff, they explained that they're getting a lot of, call it what you want, feedback from people who are, let's say, renting for six months in Collier County, and they are not given access to the beach passes. So they have people living there in their own county, who are, you know, part of that county, who don't have and can't get beach passes under this new formula they've worked out with Naples. So in that context, they thought it would be a very heavy lift to do at this point, something with us. And that's why I think all these other things that Carl and I are doing, and Mike's been involved in, and Peter, et cetera, try to open up other access points at Lee County, which is where our beach is, are extremely important. Now, he didn't say anything about next year, and I didn't say anything about next year, but, you know, maybe with a year under their belts, who knows? Because obviously Barefoot Beach, a lot of people properly consider that to kind of be part of Benita. There are a lot of people who volunteer there, you know? But that's the situ, but that's the situation.
Okay, well, thank you very much, because I told them I would ask it at Council, and of course, the issue is $8 a day for a lot of retired people, it's very difficult for them.
But I, I do want to emphasize something about Bert, because I got some emails as well, and some people were sending emails, you know, that were kind of close to the edge there with respect to Collier. I mean, this is, he's being gracious, trying to help us, you know? So I think it's important to underline that.
Thank you, Peter.
Definitely.
Because I might say one other thing, Peter. I do want to thank Carl and Greg particularly for certain work they're doing, and we could talk about that more next time. And then if you'd want, I think we should talk about scheduling, what do you call, a workshop on that Beaver thing, or some way to process it, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay. Greg, you had another writing?
Well, I was, I was, two, two things I'd forgotten. I was wanting to bring up the Beaver Report about, do we want to set up a workshop now? Or by the next meeting? And the other one was on the beach parking, you know, is there any way we can lean on Lee County a little bit more? Just even if it's just, I, I know it's, it's heavy lifting, and I know the couple emails I've gotten, even they're wanting to, like, you know, what was happening in Collier, you know, double or double it, and they'd still be willing to pay it, because like I said, the $8 a day, they're not asking for a free ride, they're willing to pay for it.
Right.
It's just...
Right. I kind of feel on Collier, we've got to work our way through this year, unfortunately.
Well, no, I understand that, and it goes back to kind of the county. I mean, like you said in the beginning, that's, we're in Lee County.
Right.
We should be doing something, they do it for boat ramps, I know that for the Imperial, used to be able to buy a sticker for the boat ramps. Why can't we do it for a beach?
Or, you know, at the foot of Beach Road, the $50 pass in Lee County should be applicable there.
Yeah.
You know, nothing's impossible, but I just remember Carl and Nicole and I going through this with Lee County from the skit go, from, I first got on Council, and they're just stubborn. They just, they want the money.
Well, and I, and I guess I look at it too, as, you know, and I'll give kudos to Commissioner Pat McCourt. At one time, they said they'd never have the two buses that would, that would share through the two counties. Maybe the two counties can get it together and work it out to where, like, Barefoot, or down that area, they can work out something.
The other issue, of course, is the State Park, which we should be looking into as well.
Yes, agreed.
For this workshop with the Jim Beaver Report, do you want to look at our calendars? Do we want to look at, our next meeting would be a day meeting, do we want to do it? Do we want to incorporate it into the meeting? Do we want to do it after that meeting? When you look at March 7th, I'm looking at, what is the, Tallahassee supposed to go till the 9th? I think, or, I mean, that week, I don't know, our legislative, not our priorities, but we might know a little bit more by then, what's actually going to happen versus not going to happen. But, but you guys, you guys, tell me, what do you, when do you want to do it?
Could I also make a suggestion, that if you want Mr. Beaver here, that perhaps we find out what his availability is?
Yeah.
I mean, does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay. Would you like us to communicate that to Council when we find that out?
Yeah, that'd be great. I would only make a request for myself and for Mike, not to exclude anybody else, that we do it on a day, maybe, that Council's already going to be in session, so to speak?
Right.
Right. So we should really try to shoot for the 21st?
Right.
If, if possible, that'd be great.
Okay.
That'd be great.
We'll, we'll work that.
Okay. Awesome. Steve, did you have anything else, anybody?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, and I said this to Carol, Carol kind of gave me the process. Senator Pasadomo and Fred had touched on this earlier. When we left Tallahassee, we were out in the cold. We weren't anywhere statewide. Senator Pasadomo did get in some money. So what this means now, now that we're going to be, and I didn't hear, Carl, did that go through today? Is that, or is that going to be tomorrow, or? In other words, when Pasadomo puts in her placeholder here for some of us, for, for us on some money in the Senate, we're now on the board. What that means is, that doesn't necessarily mean that $1.5 million is coming our way. It gives the House now, it'll go back to the House and they'll start debating it. Had we been shut out, you know, we'd be shut out. There's nowhere to put your spike in the side of the tree, so to speak, to try to climb the tree, but we've got a spike in the tree now, and now the process goes back and forth. So, Carol had explained to me that this will, there'll be like a cooling-off period here for a couple of weeks, and then, in a few weeks from now, it'll be probably another, good time for us to go back up to Tallahassee, who's ever going to go back up there, because then it's going to, it's going to, it's going to hit quickly. And basically, if this goes true-to-form and to schedule, the first week of March, this is over. I mean, session will be over. We'll see if that happens, obviously they can extend it, but that's the timeframe we're, we're looking at here. So, I told Carol to let, to let us know. I, I for one will certainly go back up to Tallahassee. We've made some good inroads. I have testified at the Hurricane Preparedness Committee, or just the Hurricane Committee, I don't know the exact title. I have handwritten them this week, I dropped off a big, big pile of letters here thanking them, let, you know, for letting me speak, thanking them for their anticipated support, and subtly, not so subtly, pointing out that we are the third hardest-hit community in the state of Florida. So when you look around, and look, no representative or senators really any different. They want to do what's right for their area. But when you're looking at this Hurricane Committee, which is a statewide committee, obviously, look at the areas that were hardest-hit. I just pointed it out to them that we were the third hardest-hit in the state, and to thank them for their support. Martha had touched on it earlier, and I'd like to, you know, if, if we can, we've, we've written about this, we've sent it in an email blast, I've also written about it, it'll be in the Baywatch News, other places. I sent it to your son, Peter. If we could really get some traction on this, and the website is, it's, it's the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. I mean, it, it dovetails in so many ways to what we're already doing. But it's a, it's a national challenge, they give away prizes, this and that. And all you need to do is go to the website, my, it's mywaterpledge.com. I did it this morning, my wife did it this morning. Right now, I, I just looked at it a few minutes ago. Benita Springs is 249th, we're number 249 in the country. We can obviously move up quickly if more, people will go to that website. It'll, it'll just ask you, will you take a shorter shower? Will you water your lawn every other day, as opposed to every, things like that? But the reality is, it'll calculate it for you and say, how much water, if you do those few simple things, you're going to save. Make sure you only put in a full load of wash, things like that. But everything we're doing with the Bloomberg Grant here, and this application, all these water projects, I think it's just another way to keep us, we're on the map. water projects, I think it's just another way to keep us, we're, we're on the map statewide. Hopefully, we'll get on the map here nationwide with this Bloomberg Grant and some other things we're working on. But it's just another way to show people our commitment to water, and I appreciate that. And hats off, we've touched on the South Florida Water Management District. There's a good rapport there, there's a good dialogue there. We laid it out on the table. We, you know, I said, let's, Mayor Bosch was here from Astero, County Commissioner Cecil Pendergrass was here, Bert Saunders was here. We had, we had, we had quite a meeting, and it was a good meeting, it was a constructive meeting, and we're going to keep that process going. So thank you for getting these priorities together and discussing that. They are going to go to bat for us in Tallahassee by giving them these priorities, and it's, it's a marathon. It's not a sprint, as we know. So the fact that I now know who the players are there, and I'm going to get to meet some more, hopefully, I'm going to get together with some others next week. Anybody on council that wants to get involved and, and help out with those relationships, that is fantastic, because it, it, look, if you're life in a bubble and you don't know who you're asking, you don't know, you know, you, you've got a big ask, but you don't know who you're asking personally, you haven't looked him in the eyeball, it's, you know, it's a whole different process. Takes a little extra time, takes a lot of extra time, but I think it's so far so good, and I intend to keep it going. And anybody on council that would like to join in, please. There is one conversation I had this morning, when you look at these projects, and we all know this, and we're fighting on behalf of Benita Springs, these are statewide issues, they're regional issues. I mean, they're, so at some point, it's going to be, okay, yes, we want to know what Benita Springs wants, yes, we want to know what Astero wants, we want to know what Fort Myers wants, but when they're looking at the playing map, when they're looking at rerouting water, and they're re-looking at doing different things, it's going to, it's going to be, it's going to take a regional approach, is what I'm already hearing. And so at some point, we're going to have to be patient with that process of, and you know, if Astero wants something different, well, what's good for the region? So very productive meetings. Remember mywaterpledge.com, and thank you for all the hard work, everybody up here, phenomenal job. Let's keep it going, and great work. So if there's no other council member reports, we will now move on to the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
So moved in a second.
Second.
Further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Seidtah?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flin?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.